Approval of minutes of previous meetings, other than the one correction on the 10th. We had meetings on, the regular meeting on Tuesday the 10th and special one on Monday the 16th.
I'll make a motion to approve both Tuesday, September 10th and Monday, September 16th. Please.
Second, Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
I'll pass, claims and payroll?
Did you get my email?
I did.
Thank you. I'm making a motion to pass claims and payroll.
Second?
Second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion passes, reports matter. Please Chief Economic Development, Susan.
City Superintendent, Kurt. Hey, we're flying right through.
There you go, get her over with.
First meeting of new fiscal year.
Yeah, don't have a lot, cleaned up, got the drains ditched down south of the shop. Hopefully we've got water running, won't sit this winter, but new fire item by the motel. Started trimming trees in the park, it's gonna take me a long process, but we'll get her. Lot of dead stuff.
Yeah, looks good though.
Cleanup days, they were a little slow, but I mean, still got done, but started winterizing bathrooms and I'm gonna get, starting to get snowy climber ready. Sounds like this weekend it could get a little so.
Quite possible.
Other than that, that's about it, so.
He's straight south of the Catholic Church, what's going on there?
Nathan Steck's got some sewer issues, so we're breaking the concrete out and we'll be pouring the concrete back for him in charge of Nathan, so. Got his house sold, so he's just getting it done now, so.
Any other questions?
Well, one of the things on Kurt's report, the Malsman report to you, we're gonna be dealing with is we have asked for the permit to come our way on the wastewater lagoon, it was over a year old, we waited on DEQ, this is actually par for them most of the time, but they sent an email out and give us the application permit for the water lagoons and said you have two weeks to respond, otherwise you're gonna be in violation. We went through and looked at this, Kurt and I, as well as Roger Protsman, the lagoon engineer from JEO, and as we suspected, Kurt and I did, the permit is goofy, for lack of better words, it is saying that in order to stay in compliance, that we can discharge once a year and up to mass quantity of 20,000 gallons per day. Now that sounds like a lot, but in order for us to meet even what we're doing right now, we are discharging and keeping up with the ammonia part of it, 800,000 gallons, that was just today, so that is more.
Yeah, what they've got on our parameters are so low that we'll be taking more in than we can discharge, that's just, there's no way it can work.
So the short answer to that, they might do a retention, they said, you might as well, you cannot discharge anymore and you can retain all of it, well, if that were the case, this is, that's silly and they're gonna know it soon, but if that were the case, we'd need another cell half the size of Plainview.
Yeah.
So, that was just occurring.
I don't know how many, how many were here, for what it's worth, I mean, the JEO people would know, that design was intended to hold a year's worth of sewage and then discharge for a limited time, once a year.
Well, they had it set up twice a year, but yeah, they had it set up where, I think the maximum was like 177,000 a day coming in, so, but you know, with all this rain and stuff, there's just, there's no way we, I mean, they've got our parameters down to .1 on our loading and I think right now, or, oh, this time of the year, I think it's like 2.36, so I can get by with that, but .1, there's no way.
So how do you go about educating them on what we need to be raised?
Well, first thing we're gonna have to do is educate some phone problem and start with I and I, I don't know, but, I mean, we got, he's, Roger is going to talk to the guy who's down in Lincoln and see what we can do on the parameters, but yeah, it's not good, so.
I'm sure it can be probably remedied, but one of the things with the ammonia content, the design of it, and this goes back, but I mean, this council needs to be aware, when you designed a lagoon of that style, the discharge of where it's at probably never should have occurred, and I think this was a cost factor, and one of the things that should have occurred is it should have been burrowed underneath the highway.
Well, you know, I talked to them and they said that that wouldn't matter.
They didn't think that would even cause a concern, well, then we're just looking at how change ammonia.
Well, that's what I asked him and he said, no, there's, I don't say it won't help. That's the first thing I talked to him about, so, I don't know.
Say, what do you?
Well, you know, there's a couple things, one, this is not anything new, this is happening in Iowa quite a bit and actually across the US, they're trying to get away from, we built these new lagoons, and lagoons are no longer in fashion, so they want water or wastewater treatment facilities to be built, well, that's another, a couple million at the least, so these lagoons are perfectly fine and the way they're discharging, they're not really hurting anything, it's just the parameters, because of the exit into dry creek or into the flow of the Elkhorn eventually, if it ever got that far, they want these limits pretty low. And it's okay to do it during the winter, it's hard to reach these limits in the spring and fall, and that's generally when we want to discharge.
We won't be able to.
Yeah, we won't, no. So anyway, fighting a good battle, that's all, I mean, probably just to add to that and nothing to, it's just a report.
If there's any updates between now and the next meeting, will you guys send us an email or something?
Yeah, we'll have to do, I don't know, we're gonna, we'll talk to Roger again and he's gonna send a, something down to Lincoln DEQ and try to amend it, so hopefully they'll listen, but I don't know, we'll see what happens.
Anything else? Thank you. You want to go now, Michael?
You have Susan here.
I know, but I'm just asking if you would like to go.
No, no.
I just wanna tell you not to get a big head, but after reading this, I'm optimistic and excited if all these things happen.
Okay, we're in the works.
It's good.
Evan's just submitted a bid to you guys for the community building, no office space, no boardroom, just carpet, paint, and some lighting, and then also to address the water issues on the one wall, yep, and Pinkman, the original one, so we have two, it's been pretty hard to get anyone else to look at it after the flood, a lot of our contractors are pretty busy, so if you guys are okay with those two bids, you know. On the housing trust fund, so for Plainview, we actually have four applications that have been sent in right now, so we are the town that has the most in, Osmond has three and I think Pierce has one right now, and so they've all been sent to NED, they're working with those homeowners now, I'll save DTR for later since we have public hearing on that. Plainview Business Chamber, hometown holidays events, we're gonna do something a little bit different this year, we're gonna focus on events on Saturday, December 7th, so day-long events, Courtney and I are tag teaming that, and then the December 9th, which is Monday, will be the light parade, the parade of trees hopefully at Mary's, Santa Claus, and all that stuff, we're really encouraging our business owners to participate in that one, and then we're also working on month-long promotions, we're titling at Christmas in Plainview, so you should see that roll out here, hopefully in the next month. PCD, our website is still under construction, we're working on that. The IRP, that has come back to us, that was that $400,000 grant that we had written, we unfortunately had to turn it away a couple months ago because we didn't have the $100,000 match, it did get a phone call back from the USDA, the state reps and the national rep, they don't want us to turn that money back in, so they asked us what can we do to help us retain this fund, and I asked them if we could do what we would do with our RBDG loans, where 77% of a loan that we would make would come from the grant and then 23% comes from LB840, so we would just match loans as we go without having to have that pot of money sitting there, and that's what they wanna do, so they're proposing that, if you guys are willing to entertain that, NED would still be our administrator on that one, but we would just make loans as we go. The need for that loan hasn't gone away, the projects that were listed in that original application still exist, minus the pharmacy, we had to structure that one a little bit different because we don't have that right now, but we're getting ready to go into this downtown revitalization, and one of the things that I've noticed working with Creighton's DTR is that you get this pot of money, this 350,000 at that time, it's now 400, and the committee is trying to be conservative, trying to help all of the business owners that apply, so they're doling out the money to try to have the most impact, but things happen, businesses close, homeowners decide not to do the project, or projects get reallocated, I wanted to do windows and doors, but my roof's leaking, so I'm gonna do my roof, and that might be a little bit cheaper than the original project, so there was money left over after the first round, and we had the same business come back and say we need more money to do the project, now we're getting ready to do round three, we only have $22,000 left and I've got 12 applications on my desk, so if we had the DTR, the IRP available, it would allow the business owners to be able to get the funding that they need and additional funding at low interest rates to finish the project while they have that contractor, while that construction is going on, because we're now getting ready to do phase three in Creighton, that's three times our downtown has been under construction in three years, where it's inconvenient for everybody and you're, and the contractors are busy and they're trying to work it in, so I'm asking for you guys to maybe consider that too.
Have they sent a new resolution or something to change the plan?
They just have to do a resolution to accept it.
So a resolution to accept it with matching funds at the time of each loan?
Correct.
They would take that as an adequate motion?
Yes.
So there you have it, if you wanna do something like that. Courtney will just have to write carefully, which she always does anyway.
Oh, absolutely.
Because she won't even look up and smile when I make a joke about her.
I'm writing.
She's writing, she's writing carefully right now.
She's working, Bruce, she's working.
Is that something Bob for next month?
Excuse me.
Be interested in, Julie?
Yeah.
Next month it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm gonna save the RBDG loan for later, since we have that also, and I gave you a kind of a little bit of a report on that TC Energy, talked to some other communities on that, so.
I was gonna say that to them too, is that something you would consider, I didn't go to your website yet or Facebook page, but put this information on there so the public can read that, is that just something you wanted to just keep with us?
That's up to you guys, it was just something that I did to do my own research and, you know, wanted to share it with you guys since you're the decision makers here, if we get through zoning, we can certainly share it out if you want that to be public, I've given it to Brooke, so the newspaper has it, you know, if he wanted to share it too, he could, so, and I think he was gonna reach out to, to the newspapers of those communities, they had to say as well, but I've contacted a couple more, I just haven't had time to put it in that interview-style format, but I thought the information was good and they were very honest and willing to discuss anything with the council.
Absolutely.
Are you okay with this motion next month?
Yeah, I just need, if you guys are okay with that, I'll let them know, then maybe they can send us some language.
We'll just move on officially next month.
Yeah, I'll have them send us some language, that might be, okay. All right, and then we'll also have to do a service agreement with NED.
Oh, absolutely.
Which you've seen that months and months ago, but it'll come up again. And then, I don't know, do you want time to review those bids that we got on the community center and do that next month too?
Do that next month.
Okay, so it's not a problem.
Any other questions for Susan? As of right now, for the next 14 minutes in here? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Michael?
There's a few things we'll talk about later, Susan should be commended not only for the work she's doing in Plainview, but also the work she's doing with Pierce County Economic Development, we had our meeting today, well, we are a part of that, and some people say, why are we a part of that, but she's managed to come up with disaster housing relief grants, which I know that we are in line for four of them, and a lot of that was based upon the need as well as houses that were not accepted by FEMA or were in a flood plain, and so several of them, you know, that are in Pierce and other ones were in a flood plain, so they're dealing with insurance, we had some that were just kinda left out in the cold, so those applications will be reviewed and looked at carefully, I don't know if there's anything on the report that you want to touch now, or if you wanna wait till later, we certainly can, that way you can continue to get a few other things done.
Number five, mayor appointment, housing board replaced Tyler Sanney through December 2022, did you take Courtney's spot once she became clerk, is that something? Oh, I was just gonna say, I didn't find out about that.
Well, yeah, it was about Courtney, I'm trying to think of somebody else that got off too, but I know within a few months, the position's been open probably for a little while now, it just come to light because of this appointment.
Sure. Can you tell the community, just because I don't remember who's all on the board currently?
That one is Keith Nelson, Bob Borrell is on it, Jody Johnson is a Realtor, and we're missing one, who's our other one we're missing, Bob?
Was it Gene Thompson?
Gene Thompson, who has been on there forever.
I had two individuals approach me expressing interest, which was kinda nice, when I went to start beating the bushes, I had two people come approach me, and they're both very interested, and the one would like to, because I said, that's the only board in the town that I've never been to, at least one meeting of, and the one individual said she would like to start seeing at least quarterly meetings or more, just to have, make sure everybody's on the same page, so, my recommendation is Shelley Celine, sitting right out in the audience, if the council would approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve Shelley to the housing board.
I'll second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Congratulations, so now you know where one of the board members is, so you can start figuring out when your next meeting's gonna be, all right. Number six, that's what we're gonna do next month, so number seven, Susan, you're back up already, sorry, discussion, action, approval of LB840 RDBG loan recommendation, Plainview Pharmacy, $25,000, 10-year, 6% interest, RDBG, $19,250, LB840, $5,750.
Yes, this is Ashley Denner.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening.
She is the next owner of the Plainview Pharmacy.
Hey.
And we'll have a bit of a name, just a little bit, not huge, but it'll be Plainview Family Pharmacy is what it will be called. So, new sign and you may have seen the red paint on the building going up, so, really exciting, so I've been working with Ashley since May on this, and she's worked with Megan Hardington, she's worked with NED, our partner, and then we're the final piece of this loan to make it happen, so, this is what we're proposing, LB840 committee met, met with Ashley, liked what they saw, recommended approval, because we're using our RBDG for the first time, the application then went to the USDA, our local reps looked at that, today they got back to us with their suggestions, the only suggestion that they had was, because the company is formed as an LLC, gives great protection for Ashley, not so much for us on the loan, so they did make a recommendation to ask for a personal guarantee, and I did talk to Ashley about that, and she's okay with that, so, again, we're in it for the least amount of money on this whole deal, 57.50 out of LB840 and about 19-something out of the RBDG, so.
Any plans of like hour changes or inventory changes?
I'm gonna make a couple of changes, as of right now, I'm gonna keep the hours the same, I am considering possibly staying open late one night during the week, and also maybe extending hours on Saturday by a couple of hours, I will stay closed on Sunday, just I'm a firm believer in that being family day, so that will stay the same, as far as inventory goes, I'm gonna make a couple of changes, on the pharmacy side of things, I'm looking to start doing med dose packaging for people, you know, it kinda comes as a blister pack basically, and we can do it by the week or by the month, so that's one thing that I'm gonna change in the pharmacy out front, I wanna add more sports medicine, you guys have a high school activity program going on here, so be able to get your braces, your kinetic tape, that sort of thing, and also looking more into home health, so your walkers, your canes, bathroom supplies, those sorts of things as well, so, those are the three things that I'm really gonna try to make the change right away, other things will come into play, such as herbals, maybe essential oils, those sorts of things, so.
Will there be any closing, like between the transition, or will it be, like, close one day and reopen the next day under you?
Pretty much, yeah, Bill will close on a Saturday and I will open on a Monday, so, so yeah, but Bill's gonna stick around, he said he'll be around to help show me the ropes and.
And then similar staff or same staff?
Same staff, yep, yep, so, yeah, I will be there the majority of the time, Bill and Chuck have both said that they would still be interested in filling in once in a while, otherwise the girls will, the girls will stay the same.
Absolutely, congrats, thank you.
Thank you.
Well?
Well, I'll make a motion for the approval of the LB840 RDBG loan for the Plainview Pharmacy.
Second?
Second.
Second, Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
It's official, you got the check.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight, discussion, action, Keno grants, Plainview Historical Society, $1,000 is, yes, yeah, that's, sorry, I was looking, do you wanna come up and talk to her?
Oh.
If you want to, you don't have to.
Okay. I didn't know about that.
I mean, we all read it, but if you just wanna put it in your own words again.
Okay, well, we've been working on the windows, and we have windows on the north side we'd like to do, but right now, we wanna do the ones on the south side, so that, that'll finish off the windows on the south side and it'll, it's the side windows where the station master would've looked out to see if there was a train coming, and those are the only ones we haven't replaced down there.
Okay, so they're the original ones from the earth?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes, yes, and I don't know, something, I don't know, something put a hole through one the one day and mowed a rock, I don't know, and so we realized, oh, we should do something with those, and because of the height, they're going to be a safety glass, a real heavy-duty glass so that we don't have to worry about breakages, so, any questions?
I was just gonna remind, I don't know if Tyler was at the meeting, the, we lowered the maximum to $1,000 is what they're asking, and there is $17,169.58 currently in the account, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the Keno grant for the Plainview Historical Society in the amount of $1,000.
Second?
Second.
Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Your check will be with Courtney probably tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
No pressure, Courtney.
No, no, no.
No, no, you gotta order it first and then you get reimbursed, she probably told you that.
Yeah, you can probably do a lot of them.
Number 11, discussion installation of caution death child sign North 6th Street, Tim Taylor and Cindy Spritz.
You got Tim, there we go, Bob.
Oh, we got Bob.
We originally put one on Woodland because my granddaughter Alexis, who's here down somewhere, now my granddaughter Caitlin, who stays with my daughter Cindy, Tim, recently was about to have hearing problems, now she has hearing aids, and the way them cars come down, up and down the streets, they still drive up and down Woodland, they race up and down there, even the buses race up and down Woodland, and they just don't stop, I mean, just not stop, they could care less whether there's caution death child, whether the kids are playing or not, they blow up down the street, and, but we need one on 6th Street, maybe they'll put one, at least when they first start up, not by the church, but by the Stuart's House, and then the end of, with Woodland, that block on 6th Street, that's all we need to put for my granddaughter, we got one on Woodland, one on 6th for both grandchildren.
Do we have those in stock or do you have to order them?
Do you know how much they cost?
I think they're stock items, so they're not gonna be much different.
Not enough to matter.
Yeah, no, no, I just didn't know how long it took to order them.
Can we define the measurements or the parameters well enough to wing it with a resolution tonight and type it up tomorrow?
We could do it.
No, 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 well, we probably won't have the signs for the better part of the month anyway, well, what are the parameters again, 6th Street from where to where?
You want it on the north side?
Yeah, just from the other side on the.
My place, I'm just counting one from Bob.
On the north side with a church here, we don't wanna go south of that one state, so that, from what Stuart's House is to Woodland Avenue, from Pilcher to Woodland, one block.
I am adverse to south of the Old Oak Tree, we gotta come up with street numbers.
200 block of North 6th.
You want yours to be your house?
Bruce, 200 block of North 6th.
6th Street from 2nd to 3rd?
The 200 block of North 6th.
Well, from 2nd to 3rd.
No, not 2nd, it'd be from Pilcher to Woodland.
Okay, 6th Street, Pilcher to Woodland, and is there another one?
And then do you want one on the north side too?
North of Woodland on 6th.
Okay, so between Woodland and?
6th Street, half a block north of Woodland.
About, thank you.
Well, we haven't voted on it yet.
How old is your granddaughter? 16.
She's 16?
My stepdaughter's 16.
And so you told her the parameters of safety, so she?
Yeah, she knows the safety, we're just afraid if she don't have a hearing aid, and she's walking down and the car goes behind her, she's on hearing.
Alexis, my granddaughter has Down syndrome, so she doesn't, she has a daughter die anyway with Tim and Cindy, but that's why we get that other one, because Alexis has a tendency sometimes to walk over there and send you up with Tims, and if they see the sign, hopefully they won't hit them, but we hope.
So, you wanna vote on it tonight and then just?
This is just a discussion.
Yeah, that's right.
I'll bring a resolution next month?
You're right.
Sorry, guys.
Nope, you're right.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Oh, you're ready again, Susan, 7:00 PM, public hearing, application for CBPD grant.
Churta, a little.
Well, a little too high, Mr. Schroeder, hi. Number 10, our discussion action resolution 591, apply for CBPD, 50,000 DTR slum and blight planning grant, so you approved the first phase last month, or the first, and this is the next step, this is correct?
Right, last month was the hearing resolution to slum and blight downtown, and tonight, Lowell is here to help us apply for grants.
Lowell Schroeder with the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District, and the downtown revitalization program, the first part of it is to apply for planning grant funds through community development block grant, and the application is to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development, and during that phase, the city will procure for, with a planner, professional planner, to develop a plan for the downtown area, and typically, you know, we would look at, the planner would look at the buildings, you know, facades, you know, types of things that could be done to the buildings to improve them, to reduce deterioration, look at public infrastructure, and then also, you know, maybe just look at other things that can be done to assist the businesses in the downtown area, maybe it's programming, maybe it's phone funds, and different things, so what we wanna do is develop a very broad plan, like what we did in Pierce, we finished up Pierce last summer, here in 2018, and really, you know, to have a 10-year Um, and really, you know, to have a, a ten year plan, so develop a long-term perspective of what can be done. Uh, then that's, that's the first phase. And, uh, with, with that phase, uh, we budgeted, um, uh, fifty-three thousand dollars for, uh, you know, the cost of forty-three thousand would be grant funds and ten thousand dollars would be a match. It takes a, uh, required ten, minimum of ten percent match. Uh, so then, once you go through the planning phases, um, then we have the opportunity to apply, uh, typically in September, for whatever is the highest ranked projects coming out. And usually, what we, we see would be facade improvements to the businesses, uh, the, the buildings downtown or public infrastructure. Most of the projects that we work with recently, Neely, uh, Creighton, and Wausau in this area have done, um, more of the facade improvements to businesses. Uh, Pierce is doing, uh, sidewalks, parking area, infrastructure, and we have to go that direction uh, because of, we were addressing handicapped accessibility and seniors accessibility. So, so that's kind of the, the longer term goal, is to, you know, once we identify what the priority is, then to, to go after the bigger money. Uh, during the planning phase, the city needs to commit, will commit the, the ten thousand dollars for matching funds. During the project phase, typically, if you do building facade improvements, then we have the businesses come up with the twenty pers- twenty-five percent match. And, and typically, uh, a typical project for businesses is gonna be in the, the fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollar range. And so, you know, their cost is gonna be seventy-five hundred to, you know, twelve thousand, you know, in that range. So it really is pretty, um, it's really pretty reasonable. And, uh, kind of the project that we're going, finishing up now is in Wausau, so if you ever have a chance to drive through Wausau, some of the buildings don't even look like the same building, kind of a really bringing back the historical look. Uh, you know, I was sitting talking, listening at, went into the coffee shop and the old guys were talking, and it's like, wow, this is really, really great, so it's kinda, kinda fun. So, uh, it's, it's a lot of potential, a lot of, you know, assistance to the businesses and kind of invigorate that. So, you know, the first step is to have this public hearing, so anybody, you know, business people, anybody in the audience have an opportunity to comment on that, we record those comments. And then we, we have the resolution to, uh, apply for the grant. And, uh, the grant is due, uh, the end of thirtieth of September. We'll probably hear, uh, probably November, December, someplace in that timeframe, and then get going on it, so.
And the ten thousand dollar match is, I talked to LB eight forty already, would come from Economic Development Fund, so, not.
Okay, we talked about the ten per- you mentioned ten percent, this is somewhere north of twenty percent. Is that on purpose to make it a better match?
Twenty, twenty-five percent is the minimum match.
Why, that said ten percent?
Twenty-five percent.
Okay.
And in this case, it's ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Do you have the first question? I see the.
Me?
Yeah. It's a public hearing. Well, go ahead. I knew that's why you sat up front.
I don't want you to not hear me, Brian. So, the plan, you're gonna come up with a plan, and you're gonna be with all the businesses to do this plan? Are you gonna say, here's your plan for planning this, what you gotta do?
Uh, typically, what the, we, we'd hire a planner that has done these before. And usually, uh, for example, what, what we did in Pierce, where, um, you know, there's usually a, a committee that's appointed by the, the mayor of the city, uh, that might be four or five or six, you know, people, could be business people, a city staff person, um, that kind of provides input. Uh, typically, you have, do some surveys of, of the business people of residents, and then maybe have some focus groups, you know, talking to the business people and so on. So it's really driven by the input from the business owners, from the customers.
Is the same facade on every building if you do this plan for an overall effect?
Uh, the, really, all the, each business owner, if, if they choose the facade program, each business owner, uh, can kind of come up with their own, what they wanna do. Uh, sometimes the planner may draw some examples of what you could do to different businesses, but you aren't trying to doing that. Uh, like I said, typically, the improvements that most of the businesses are doing, you know, might be awning signage, uh, replacing the windows for more efficient windows. We wanna keep the historical look, as much as possible, returning it to more historical look. Um, sidewalk, maybe accessibility, you know, both sidewalk or, you know, the coming into the business, um, some, some, you know, and, and some towns, we've done roofs, you know, because we, you know, repairing, you know, roof leakage, you know, damages is, is part of keeping those buildings in good shape for long term. So, you know, what you do to your business is totally up to the property owner. Now, again, that downtown revitalization committee will have program guidelines, and, you know, they will approve the projects. But typically, you know, we try to set up the funding so that, you know, the funding kind of matches the demand. Um, in Wausau, we're paying seventy-one percent of, of grant funds for the facade projects and forty percent of the cost of the roof, just based on the demand that we have. But the state has increased the amount of funding, you know, for that phase two project.
Right. Our goal is not to have a matching, matching look. Our goal is to let our individual business owners, you all have a vision for your building and your business, and you all have your dreams, so we want you to see those realized. If you look at Creighton's DTR, which we're still in, um, the buildings are not matching, matching. The only thing that you could look at Creighton and say, there's a lot of black awnings here, but that was just a natural selection and it just kind of happened that way, that's what they wanted. Um, so you'll see a lot of black awnings, new, and on the signage, but every business had different project. Well, we had two buildings in Creighton that had the same project. Some had windows, some had doors, some had roof, some had concrete, um.
In Plante, we have ordinance five ten, which means all downtown businesses have to be a brick and mortar. So if they aren't, do we throw out the ordinance, or do we try to make the facade look like we're in adherence? You think about it.
I don't think anyone's taking down the brick, but, I mean.
There's, there's an old fire district ordinance out there that was designed to have the downtown be less burnable, and that would certainly have to be taken into account.
It is an old one.
It is. It's in the nineteen oh two history book you want.
I didn't wanna go back that far, but I know it was old.
Right. I mean, obviously, you're gonna wanna preserve the look of the downtown. You want it to look the way it does, but better. Um, I'm not a fan of steel buildings in the downtown, so if somebody wants to take the brick and the steel, we might have something to say about it, but, I don't know.
Well, and, yeah, and, and that's what, you know, that maybe can set some guidelines.
Right. But in talking to all the business, I mean, I've talked to all of you, most of you, um, downtown, none of you have told me that you wanna do anything radical to your buildings. It's a lot of, sure, we'd like to have new windows, uh, we'd like to have a new entry here, we'd like this to be handicap accessible, uh, we'd need some help with pin and tucking, oh, I've got some cracks going on here. No one's got a radical plan, you know. I haven't even heard anyone say they want awnings, they just want some help. And, uh, for the ones that have done the outside work, the conversations have been, sure, we'd like to have some help with my flooring, or bring my electrical up to code, or the plumbing, or address the upper level, and they'll, they'll be funding for that too, so.
What'd you say, the downtown, is that only on Locas?
No.
How much does that include?
I think we blanketed it all, I think, on Highway twenty.
Yeah, that's.
We blanketed every downtown street from Mary's all the way to the city office and then all the feeders, and then all the way down Highway twenty. We made it broad on purpose.
Because sometimes you say downtown, that's kind of deceiving.
Well, there was discussion, I mean, about whether to include, uh, Highway twenty or not, you know, but they felt they are part of a sprawling business along the Highway twenty corridor, why not?
Plante is unique in the sense that we almost have two business districts. You have the Highway twenty corridor, and you have our downtown proper, and then you have this little area kind of south of town. So we included everything that we could.
Good, thanks.
Any other public comments?
Um, maybe I should maybe come out of public hearing?
Second?
I'm second.
Uh, motion, maybe the second to come out and close the public hearing, Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Now we'll go to number ten, discussion action, resolution number five ninety-one, apply for the grant for fifty thousand dollars.
I will make the motion to approve resolution number five ninety-nine.
Five ninety-one.
No, five ninety-one, thank you.
Yep, welcome.
I'm second.
Second. Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Uh, Bruce, can I vote on this? Since I'm a business owner, building owner?
You guys?
I think you can, I mean, this is, this is loans and grants, this is not give you city money.
Aye. Pam? Julie?
Aye.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
And I know, like, in, in Wausau and Creighton, uh, if there's a business owner on or contractor on the council, they just abstain from that particular vote.
Right. They still receive funding, you could, but, um, what we do, we call drawdowns. Well, you should pay the bills, you would just abstain from the vote at that time.
I have a question. Can I ask something, Brian?
Just wait for a couple of times.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is it about?
Sorry.
That's fine, I was just. No, I was just trying to see what to go to next, because we have certain things we gotta do at certain times.
Thirteen.
Okay. Thirteen, discussion, updates to utility bill disconnect payment policy.
I'm gonna put this in, we have the discussion, but I'm gonna put this in Courtney's hand to explain what she would like to see as the disconnect policy, since we have changed from the electric system to water sewer and trash only. But I think we need to, you know, get some things cleared up.
Um, well, since now, since we only have water, uh, water sewer and trash, if you do not pay, your water is shut off, and you take the trash tote. Cannot shut your water off in the winter, we'll have busted pipes. So, um, honestly, and the disconnect is set up in the code, the first reconnect fee is fifty dollars, the second is two hundred, and everyone after that is three hundred dollars for your reconnection fee, for a, for your water sewer bill. Um, I have a lot of people that continually do not pay their bill, we've disconnected them almost every month. Um, I guess my thing is, I would like to see maybe going forward, if you have a continual disconnect, in order to have services with the city, you would have to have automatic payments in order to have services. Um, it's not fair to them that we're, you know, we're nice, we don't, we're not gonna cut you off in the middle of, on a Friday at five and have no water for the weekend. I said, but that's not fair to us that we're, you know, having to continually chase people down to pay their bill, um, especially if they're habitually not paying it month after month. Um, I'm also saving them money. I would not wanna pay a two hundred dollar or three hundred dollar reconnect fee for a sixty dollar water bill. So, I mean, we don't have to do anything with it tonight, I just didn't know if that's something, I kind of want it to stated in the code that, you know, if you're two or whatever more times a year that you're disconnected, like completely disconnected, you would have to have automatic payments to have services. And there's other places that do require that, if you have other services that do require that, so, um.
And I, it seems to me that makes sense. I would be a little concerned that people that can't pay their bill have no way to set up an automatic payment.
I guess.
Maybe there are some efforts to be made.
Well, but the whole thing is, I am very, much as someone calls me and says, I can't pay my bill until October tenth, I give them till October tenth, I don't. So if they can't even call and say, I can't pay my bill, I don't know really what else to do to help them. Um, that's always been out there, that they can make payment arrangements, it's never, I never deny it. Um, you know, within reason, we, we allow them extensions on their bill. So, I mean, if you were there every day to call and, and make up payment arrangements, so. I mean, that's, I guess that's probably their responsibility to go along if they wanna.
It's worth a try.
Yeah.
And I guess it might just kind of reprioritize who gets paid when, try to get the city a little higher up the list with the automatic payment business. Well, I can have an ordinance for you next month, and you can talk about the details.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Would you say that the water bill is generally around twenty-five percent dollars? Would you? Total bill for most people is between fifty and sixty for everything, for their whole bill to the city. I mean, during the summer, it's gonna be, if you water a lot and that kind of stuff, it's gonna be up, but your base, your trash is fifteen dollars fixed, twenty, if you got two totes, your sewer's a fixed rate. So your water just varies based on how many gallons you use, and, I mean, yeah, most people are, you can average, you average probably fifty, sixty dollars a month for your. So if you're having a hard time paying your water bill, you probably should watch for some, you know, ways to not waste water. Well, and, you know, we notice if people have leaks and stuff, and you can see that, and we tell them, and some of them just choose to not do anything, so. And so if your ordinance says you have three times that you, you charge for, would you stay with that? That's already in there, that's already in the code. You'd give them three times, for sure. I don't know, I, I'm trying to save them, I'm trying to save them the three hundred dollar reconnect fee.
If you go three times, you got three hundred dollars, why not go after the second one? At least give them a fighting chance in the ordinance to go on automatically.
So that would pay six months.
Yeah, yeah.
It does, I mean, it's a, and we, we, you, you would think, and it's not the ones that cannot, 'cause everybody's got this, uh, be careful of the mentality of, uh, they can't afford it. Uh, some of these are habitual offenders that can afford it, just simply forget. It becomes kind of a protection for them as well. They, there's no problem with the money, it's just that they run out of days and don't think about it, and they don't wanna put it on, I mean, for whatever reason, they wanna do it themselves, and yet they don't show up until the day that they're disconnected, so.
And the higher amounts were in there when the, um, the utilities were part of that, when the?
Oh, that water reconnect's always been in there that way.
Okay.
The fifty, two, and three, that was when, still the electric, it was that way.
It was.
And electric was only twenty-five for a reconnect.
Sure.
It was.
Okay.
Nineteen oh two.
So, but it's not, it's not, it's not good either to turn the water on and off every time somebody's not paying their bill.
Right.
We can't keep replacing curb stops that break and all that kind of stuff too, so. It's wear and tear on our equipment.
Would you consider you opening up an automatic pay for the public?
They could, you can call over the phone and pay with a credit card.
You can already automatically.
You can already automatically do that. And you can, it's, you can do ACH, you can do automatic withdrawal from the checking account, I mean, there's, we just don't have online bill pay, that's basically the only thing you don't have, so.
I don't know.
Yeah, so there's, there's lots of options for them to pay.
Do you want to, um, do number fourteen then, right away?
Uh, you probably don't have time for fourteen, uh, Brian, would you want me to go ahead and maybe just do, uh, some notes? I've got it for my report.
Sure, sure.
That way you can not waste the time later.
Sure.
I'll.
I'm all about not wasting time.
Um, seeing Rod Cook here reminds me, I, this setup that we have probably could use some changing, so that the looking down, back and forth.
I was gonna bring that up at the beginning, I thought I'd save it till the end, but you do it.
Yeah, but that's one of the things I've got on my agenda, I think that we could probably put this in more of a V, or somewhat, you know, so we can kind of have that ability to see each other.
Or go back downtown.
Or go back downtown.
Into the newly painted building.
When the newly painted, newly, uh, she's shaking her head.
Or there's speakers and microphones.
Um, okay, that, that was one, just something that I just wanted to bring up that maybe we should, because, uh, this is kind of an authoritarian style of meeting, and it, to me, it never works well. I like it better when it's circle. There's a reason a lot of them are changing, because this is kind of a, uh, you know, especially if we put you on a step up, an elevated step, that's like you looking down at the crowd, and that, that's, that's nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty, so. Um, you'll see some of the older chambers still, and they do it, Norfolk still does it, and you'll see South Sioux and Columbus and Fremont, Brian goes to a few of them, so he knows. Um, little update on what I understand, and I'm not gonna go with it too far, but the building downtown will be coming down shortly that was burned. And the reason I know this is because the bid came in, and the insurance company, what knowledge I have is not complete detail, but enough to tell you that the Dave Frederick has the bid and is beginning the process, and will probably start it as soon as possible. And that includes working with Kurt and trying to figure out the, the details on the C and D site between ash and non-ash, and working with DEQ and, and trying to make sure that we do the right thing, 'cause we are a non-lined C and, C and D site, which means that we can't have that ash getting into the groundwater. If it's got a little bit on it, it's not a big deal, but it's the same way we deal with, uh, asbestos and a few other things, that there's some, uh, pretty crazy, uh, things that we do out of C and D, There's some pretty crazy things that we do out of C and D that DEQ, D E E, by the way. If I say DEQ, it's because that's old school. It's now N D E E, so. Gary, have you got used to it yet?
No.
Okay. Budget, you'll see two things. One, we submitted the budget right on time. I want to commend the council that was involved with all of the numbers in the budget. We do things differently than a lot of people. You're going to see this later when it comes to salary adjustments too. Creighton goes into a executive session and comes out five minutes later and just simply does a four percent across the board. I told you what that was. That was incremental financing and budgeting and that doesn't work. We went through a zero base, went through a lot of meetings and I'm pretty comfortable with the budget the way it is. There were a couple of changes you did see in the paper. If those were not self-explanatory as you were reading them, it basically was the idea that when I put in the formulas, the state auditor has protected formulas in their budget sheets and I forgot to back out the county share. They always want their share and it seems like every year I forget the county and they remind me that way. So, we actually had in the paper, you were approving three hundred and twelve thousand for a property tax. We actually approved the night legally, three oh nine. So that's that three thousand that was taken out. So you've done everything right. I just had to publish it in the newspaper for a second time, those changes, and it was actually one where it was going down. So everybody was happy on that, I hope. The next item is, I talked to Brian, I think it would behoove this council and some of the stability and working together of having a board training of some kind. And that includes a lot of things that I think are just expected and it's not fair to you and it should be actually one of those things you have right at the beginning. And Brian and I talked about probably looking at, the best way to do it is like a little bit of a retreat setting. I know everybody's days, everybody's hours are really pushed, but it would have a little bit of open meetings, some of those questions. Bob, there'd be that question even with you had, even though you've been on the council before abstaining. Now you know, and there's really nothing wrong with, but the question was asked and I commend you for asking that kind of question. But I think the board training would go a long ways to solidify and stabilize, you know, kind of the last two or three months. And we can wait for a little while on it, but I definitely have the program set up. It's not my program. It's one I've seen that's been used and I've helped other communities use this program as well. Probably the last thing, I'm trying to stall here. It's seven twenty-five. We're doing pretty good here, so. Get you into that next public hearing. NCMA, I work with the Nebraska City Managers Association. This last month I went down to Lincoln and was appointed and voted in as the president-elect. That doesn't mean I'm the president. It means next year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, will be president of the association for the administrators. And we'll be hosting an administrator meeting here in Plainview and probably using Norfolk. I've already talked to Andy down in Norfolk about having events, things lined up. It's about a hundred and fifty to two hundred administrators will come and basically check it out, maybe golfing. But I also want to show off Plainview. Plainview is a very, if you haven't had a chance to read on the website and do this Revitalize or Die, the guy knows what he's talking about. And he's talking about place-based community development, building place. Plainview has a lot of place. Not only with the churches, but also with historical societies and we can go on and on, Plownall Museum. There's a lot of neat things in Plainview that I think that some people who tend to always think that we're spiraling into the abyss maybe need to sit there and wake up a little bit and go out there and take a look to see what you've got rather than what you don't have. With that in mind, the ICMA, which is the international, I'm going to be going down to Nashville in about a week. It's already paid for. All of the things, it was roughly right around a thousand dollars that have NCMA paid for that. What I would like and ask for the council with your blessing is, I've already taken care of the hotel and airfare together and was able to package it for five days for five hundred and some dollars. That was as cheap as I could go and I thought, looks, I'm coming back to the council to further my education and do that. So I certainly hope that is not out of line. And then go on to a committee because one of the things Bruce and I talked about years ago is, I don't want to go someplace for education purposes without letting the council know or, you know, the value of it because it's part of the requirement. I'm just not going to go to every conference there is, so.
And that's just hotel and airfare for yourself?
What's that?
That's just airfare and hotel?
That's airfare and hotel that I've already taken care of, but I'd like that. All food, I'm taking care of myself in that. There are, most of it's being paid for down there because when you go to these things, they have every lunch, dinner is a sponsored event. So I know like the University of Nebraska Omaha is sponsoring one night. I know UNL is down there sponsoring another night. This is just for the Nebraska coalition, so.
I guess what I'm asking is the hotel and airfare are just for yourself? That does not include your spouse?
No, she's not going.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
She won't. She wants that five days off. She thought about it once, but you know, I think that's as far as that goes. No, this is just for myself.
Okay.
So, you're close enough to seven thirty. I've got a lot more on the agenda here a little bit later, but let's see. If you want, Brian, I will let you take care of the Gary and the public hearing.
Sure. Number twelve, one and six-year roads, Miller and Associates, public hearing, seven thirty P M. Good evening, Mr. Steele.
Good evening.
If you want, the one thing I want to do with Gary is the one and six, the people here, and I think I just talked to Gary this morning. My PowerPoint didn't work, so I'll move this off then. Understand, the one and six is a statutory requirement. We've publicized this many, many times. One of the things about the one and six, we have a public hearing, this is the time now, starting at seven thirty, to talk about additions or subtractions. You cannot do that prior to the public hearing, no matter who it is. So this way, everybody gets to have a say in the process and take a look at what's proper, what's not. And I know that you've been waiting for this for some time. This includes your people up here. The four councilmen will be doing the voting on or off or whatever they see fit. So it's just something for you to keep in mind, so.
The floor is yours, sir. Thank you. My name is Gary Steele. I'm with Miller and Associates. I see some new faces. I've been here before to talk about the one and six. I gave you all a eleven-by-seventeen map that you can draw and doodle on if you want to or as I talk and. And also, I got one more here, Mike, that you could hand us.
I already have, just Gary.
Some have agendas, some don't have agendas.
Also gave you a little flashlight and if you pull the little white thing out, make sure you're not looking at the light. It's pretty bright. Just a little bit about the one and six. As Mike said, this is a statutory requirement. It's something that you have to do for your, for your funding from your highway allocation funds. It is a planning document. All the streets that you see on this map, I go through and I work up a cost estimate and we put those on summary sheets and those all go together into the plan. And in the past, we would take that plan, we would come, you folks would go through this public meeting, add and subtract streets to this map and then we'd take the map back, make the changes, send them back to Mike. He would come to you for approval of the resolution with the revised map. And I believe that that is the goal tonight, is to pretty much get the changes that you want to see in the map and then take those back. We'll make those changes and send them to Mike for passage of the resolution. In the past, we would take this and put it together with the plan. We'd submit it to NDOT and they could check the check that Plainview met the requirement. They've changed that and now you have to do a certification. Basically saying that you've done all the exact same things, but now instead of sending in the plan, you send in the certification. And so that'll probably be part of your approval next time. And so it is a planning document and there's nothing on here that is set in stone. So just because you show it as one year, you do not have a year to build it. Some communities have the same one and six-year streets on there for years and years and years. But it is something that is looked at when you go look for funding. And so it's something that you want to visit every year and update. So that's kind of brief. Any questions on those aspects of it? I will mention that I talked to Brian today and he had some requests as far as some changes and I'll mention those now. They are Woodland Avenue to add from Fourth Street to Ninth Street. Fourth Street from Congress.
Third Street.
Third Street, excuse me. I have a listener for it. Third Street from Congress to Locust. And then to change Ellsworth Avenue, which is shown in the little blow up in the bottom left-hand corner, from a one year or from a six-year to a one year.
Just between second and third.
Okay, just between second and third.
And that, what I brought up before, I just wanted to make sure that it was well aware that this now becomes, because it doesn't go back, this now becomes like council, you are, this is a mayoral recommendation. It is not necessarily on the map. He's recommending that it go on the map. It'd be just like the public hearing. For any of you that are now wanting to say something, now is the time to say something. Brian's doing it more as a citizen.
Those were all at the request of citizens that live on those streets too and they know that that's not necessarily going to happen, but they just requested it, certainly.
The only other thing I'll mention is your, your twenty-twenty highway allocation is about a hundred and eighty-seven and some change, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand and some change. And that's your LMI. Unfortunately, it's forty-four point five percent. And for those of you, does everybody know what an LMI is? Low to moderate income and you got to be fifty-one percent or higher in order to get CDBG funding, so.
It depends on how you look at it, whether you're CDBG, no, it's not good, but. No, this is, you always have, we're all gone already? This is a statewide number. This is a number, if we were to receive or if we were to be forty-four point one, is that what you said?
Fifty-one.
No, no.
Forty-four point, you're forty-four point.
Forty-four point five or that. That's what the state's saying you are. If we were, if our state said we were fifty-one or fifty-two, guess what? You wouldn't have to do a survey.
That's the only thing it does is you don't, if you're over the fifty-one percent, you don't have to do surveys. If you're under the fifty-one percent, you've got to do the surveys to show that you are over.
Right. Which we've done and we did it for the library and we did it through the fire hall, so it is possible.
What streets did you add again? Didn't catch them all?
Woodland Avenue from Fourth Street to Ninth Street.
Third Street.
Fourth Street to Ninth Street.
Basically from the bus barn that was on there a long time ago that got off. I had some people along there that after this year requested to get it put back on.
And then Third Street from Congress to Locust.
There's a house owner down there that requests to eventually get their street paved in front of their house.
And then Ellsworth Avenue from second to third to be a one year instead of a six year.
Which again, does not mean that it's going to get paved. Go ahead, Skip.
What does that, what does that propose from Ucalis to Ohio Avenue? What does that?
That is on the.
Up there by Dot Place.
Yeah, be the east side of where Lisa lives. There's not a street there now, but eventually when houses do get built up there, they need a street to get to their house as that gets developed.
I've got that Fifth Street closed.
My house is sitting on top of it, but south.
Skip, believe it or not, it's still planted. It is not closed. Ohio's closed.
I believe you closed from Ohio to Emerson, if I remember right.
Are you standing on paving there or are you just graveling it like we talked about the last time, only if someone does build back there?
I, my answer would be we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. If somebody buys the land to build a house? It's just a plan right now.
I'm just.
How much you want to pay?
So I'm looking at seventy-five thousand for the front part of my land and then I'm looking at seventy-five thousand for the back part of my land just to have someone be able to drive on paved road.
I understand, yes.
Are we talking about Fifth Street going?
Yeah.
And we're showing that as just grading.
Just grading.
Yeah, I thought that's what we had said.
It still has to be on the plan.
It just has to be.
Yeah, but he just said, he's like, we'll cross that when we get there. You know, last year we talked to him, it was going to be gravel.
Well, and one of the things too, Lisa, is that, and Bruce has brought this up before and I know he hates when I put him on the spot, but there's a cost benefit. When you cross that bridge and as we talked about, you know, if it is, like you said, seventy-five thousand, is the cost benefit to you because people drive on your road? Going to be worth that whole thing? No, no. And it's not worth it at all. So what is it the city will put up? What is the cost benefit? And Gary, maybe you want to explain that a little bit more about how that works with homeowners and that, so. Maybe you don't do that, just give it to the engineering. Stay away from that stuff.
I just design them.
Well, that does leave the uncertainty, but the rule on assessments is you're assessed to the extent of the benefit to your property. So that's a debatable item, of course. In some towns, we'll actually take the street itself and go a half block each direction because these people all access that street. Plainview has generally just assessed the frontage. But on a couple of these that we did here this last year, it was obvious that those were access roads into town and half of it was town and half of it was benefit or something. And so that was all taken into account. That leaves it uncertain and something to watch, of course. It's just on the plan to, there needs to be a street someday.
Doesn't that run true with, well, the bus roads have never been, instead of moving the bus shed up to the school where it should be? Moving that, paving that street for the bus road, isn't that always been true? Why it's been always been turned down is because those lots run a hundred and fifty foot instead of fifty foot in front of your place?
I don't think I've heard that before, but probably be cheaper to build a bus shed over by the school.
Skip, I think that road's been on one and six for what, three years?
And then it went off for like ten or fifteen.
At least.
So for general purposes, when those two cul-de-sacs were done, the cement was put in there first and then hopefully Mr. Hiller's wanted to sell the lot, but then he went broke because nobody bought them.
Right.
But had he been able to sell them, it would have been assessed to the landlord. So those people have now bought that and so I doubt that they even knew that they had an assessment on that because it was part of the sale price. So when you develop in the northeast part of Plainview, are we not going to put the streets in first and whoever buys that lot assumes their portion of that and they don't even worry about it because it's just part of the payment?
I always thought that was a plan, but as you see, there's four houses up there now without paved streets on fourth streets.
I don't know. Going forward, are we going to change that policy or not?
I don't know so much as a policy as it is a contractor's direction they go. A lot of times, you know, contractors, we don't have a huge amount of contractors in Plainview willing to put up houses. Now you go into Norfolk Pierce area, they may have four or five contractors or even in Osmond where say somebody like Schmidt or Walt Ashoff and they would build and they would build these streets and build around and have these houses. And then they sell the houses with the assessment already embedded in the sales price.
Well, you can, you can look at Laurel or Crofton. They've both done big developments where poof, here's four blocks of nice paved lots and then they try to sell the lots.
And that's what Neely did.
Hopefully fair enough to include paying for the paving.
Breaking ground on the.
Doesn't always work.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I was wondering, when is it possible to ever pave the street where, from where I live on the west side and that gravel road that goes down to the football field?
Technically on the map, that's not a street.
Yeah.
Belongs to the school.
Belongs to the school.
I don't see Mr. Laurel.
Just Schmidt is though.
Yeah.
Bus barn, right on.
Bus barn, yeah. There you go.
Walk through the building.
Go ahead.
Along with what Mr. Holt was saying, isn't that the reason you probably want to open up Fifth Street? Is because you're planning that three flats out there?
That was on Fourth Street.
No, it's on Fifth Street.
It would be. It'd be fourth, Skip. I'm trying to get my directions, but there's actually an alleyway.
Fifth Street. You're on the front, I don't know which way you're planning on facing on that. You're planning on facing the east or west?
West.
West. You're going to plan? You're going to plant, okay. But is it going to face the alley then?
East isn't the alley. Well, the way I see it, it was planned to, to face west, but that'd be looking in the back of the houses, those other houses. Isn't that the main reason you want to open up Fifth Street?
I think it was put on there even before that, just because of-
But isn't that the reason?
Not because of the three-plex or whatever, it was more of a, the housing when the LBA forty and the Economic Development Group bought those lots. They looked at the lots that were there where Grow and now Christiansen are at, and then it comes up, there's an alley there behind them, and then there's lots that face, then the east, which would face Fifth Street, which doesn't exist. So if somebody wanted to buy those lots for a grand or two grand, which is what they're for sale for, and want to develop a front door to Fifth Street, then that inevitability needs to be there to have Fifth Street on the plan. So, because there's supposed to be six, can be six homes on the, the land that the city owns. We now have two. There's room between Grow and Christiansen, not a lot, but it says a hundred and twenty, so I got to believe them. And then the other side, the other three double lots that are facing Fifth Street.
Sure. But advantageous to open up Fifth Street then?
It would be advantageous someday somehow, yes.
But our plan that four-plex didn't-
It's advantageous.
Yeah, it didn't include paving. It was, we would like the four-plex, we know it would probably have to work for however amount of time. It wasn't.
Sure.
A brand new, a brand new one home is attractive enough.
I guess I'm going to speak up on behalf of Dr. Groves though, because he can't make it. If this is the time to sit down and talk, and I assume that's why Lisa's here, and this Christiansen's, if this is the time to talk about taking off or adding on something, I don't know where they all stand, but I'm assuming if they are against quote Fourth Street from whatever the paved one is. If they're, if we're all sitting here, I know Groves is against it because right now he has to fully disclose selling his house, and he's not going to get sold with the potential alley of paving X. It's on a lot of people's minds. I think a lot of people will be biting at the house, but it's, I don't know how much it is a foot, but you're looking at a three hundred foot, or not three hundred, but a hundred and twenty foot of paving, potentially speaking.
I think it was nearly a fifty thousand.
So if somebody walks into his house and offers him three hundred for his home, and then they go, oh, by the way, you're going to pay this, okay, I'll give you two fifty, he has well over four wrapped up into it, here we sit. So I guess if this is the time to sit down and ask about this of remove or not remove, even though it's just a plan, doesn't mean it's happening in twelve or thirty years. As of right now, if we can ask to remove Fourth Street from the paved road north to Emerson, can we remove it off the plan?
It was a paving district before I got on the council.
But Mike stated at the beginning of this, this is the time, this is the moment right now to either add or subtract, if that's what we want to do.
The short answer is yes.
So that's what I'm asking. I'm assuming that's why half my neighbors are sitting here, and I'm speaking on behalf of Dr. Groves, because he can't be here. He called me and said, try to speak up for me. I'm impartial one way or the other. I bought the lot knowing what I could have or not have. I know it's a plan, but at this point, until more gets developed, potentially speaking, I don't know. I mean, I don't know who makes the decision, if it's us, if it's this gentleman, if it's the council. I don't know who makes the decision.
You have four council members.
I guess I would recommend to take it off. We have all these other six-year projects that are on here right now, and all the citizens from up in that area don't want it.
So that's number fifty-seven?
Yes.
Yes.
Gary, there is no, and I've asked Bruce too the same too, that from an engineering standpoint, there is no issue if that's already been declared, a paving district by the council in previous years to just take it off? I don't know why.
I don't think it makes any difference.
We could add it and remove every year.
My understanding is, yeah, this is-
If the landlords all came down here in three months and said, good lord, pave this next summer, you just add it back on and pave it. It's not a problem.
It's, it's just a plan.
That'll happen. Yeah.
But what I'm stating also is, is potentially speaking across from me, I got a cornfield that is city limits, and if someday it's developed into more housing and more gets developed, and we all sit down and go, you know what, it is a pain in the butt. I mean, I'm not going to lie, the thing stopped at the black square until I put a shovel in the ground, and then we got it added to Emerson, which is fine. I bought the lot knowing that, and I'm not sitting here arguing it. It happens, it happens. But I can tell you that half this group sitting here right now, if we remove it, you're going to have half as much sitting in this room talking about it.
Well, nobody will come.
I mean, dead serious. I mean, I'm just, I'm just speaking, I don't know, hate me or love me for it, but.
This is the closest you'll ever get to a democratic process, really, true to my need. That's what you're here for.
So I guess I would ask the council to make a motion to remove number fifty-seven.
Don't even need a motion, just say remove it.
I, I would recommend removing it.
Well, if it's kind of a consensus, I mean, he'll just go about that.
So that's going to be removed then?
Nothing, remember, nothing's passed until it's passed.
Exactly.
But he'll change the plan and bring it back with it off.
Fifty-seven. We're talking fifty-seven.
But he also said sixty-five, the Fifth Street one.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
So if it, if you all make the motion to pass it and approve moving, removing our street from the one and six plan, can we, how do we go about removing or disabling the paving district from our street? Does that a possibility down the road? Because I feel like it would come up again if we don't remove it as a paving district.
You could certainly ask if that'd be put on the agenda, and the council couldn't do it. Now, if you're going to remove fifty-seven, does it make any sense to leave sixty-one and sixty-five on there?
No.
Well, sixty-one and sixty-five aren't concrete paving either. They're just, or excuse me, sixty-one is just gravel and grading, so the same with sixty-five.
Do you need to have that?
No, you don't have to have it.
But that would be perhaps just to grade up a street if there was more housing in there. That would make some sense, wouldn't it?
It'd also be infrastructure, putting water and things like that through there then.
Thirty thousand a block, Skip.
Yeah.
So I guess, I think I've been speaking for Skip here at this, I think is what he's getting at, is if they turn that, if somebody buys east of Dr. Groves' house tomorrow for two thousand dollars and they plan to build a house, so they have to venture into their home. I mean, they could buy it. If that stays and gets put in as gravel, and you have to bring down sewer and water to him, service utilities or whatever, is the homeowner or landowner on the east side, i.e. Skip, is he responsible for a gravel road?
We can try. We can go after Skip. No, wait, so we, no, because we've had-
I'm sixty-one or sixty-five.
We've, we've had this happen before. I mean, make it real simple. If you want to take it off, take it off. Based on the past, Gary mentioned, and I'm a little more comfortable with NDOT. Understand, DOT has said that you can put these back on based upon need. In the past, this was not the case. So we kept them on one and six, because if you ever wanted to pave, it used to be a very solid, if it's not on the plan, you can't do it. And that is changing a little bit. So yeah, if there's ones to be removed, now's the time to talk about it.
Mike, I don't mean to be derogatory or anything about, about that street, well, by two blocks of ground that I own. But it, it, and I think it should be done for economic development and things like that. But I'm, I'm more thinking about the infrastructure of what's going underneath there, the water lines. I mean, are we going to go with four inch or six inch or?
What would happen, Skip, in, in a short answer, and that way you can quote, and that way I can hear about it a year from now, and I'm with you on this. We've been through this several times with people who have ground that is somewhat still pertaining to agriculture. You would still probably go for an ag exemption. Now, understand, if we build a road and you decide one day, hey, I think I'm going to build three houses in benefit off the city, or I'm going to put something there, you would then assume those costs of development, whether it's the road or whether it be a water or sewer district, any of those things and that. But as long as you're sitting there and you're still farming that into alfalfa and things like that, that's, would be, I would tell you, that's where you'd go. It's no different than Norde Johnson, it's no different than Elaine Door when we put in the, the one on Ninth Street. They're agriculturally exempt.
And that, and cultural part is, is a factor there. I mean, it is, but it isn't. But what I'm, I'm thinking about is, I hope that they do the underground stuff first before they go make a roads, and then we got to tear up the roads, because we've got four-inch beans up there now that aren't considered mains, right, Kurt? Is that a service line? Is it four-inch? Considered a service line?
We'll probably go up to six or eight on that.
We do have four-inch in town?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
A lot of four-inch.
A lot of four, too.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, right?
Well, more than you, we would like to think about.
Yeah. Those are service lines, not, not, and how many people give a service with that, right? Before we start paving all these other things and anything, should we do the infrastructure?
Yeah, we, we often run water and sewer up there.
Yeah. But we get them right, and work their respective, I mean, that, that, oh, but if they do that, they hope they do the underground and then build the road. Not build the road ahead of it, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you'd have to do that and get through your, you know, the electric one. But we've got electric on. Right back behind you, straight up the alley on that, so we can still grant ourselves.
Just let the infrastructure's taken care of before you start-
Right, right, right.
But we're getting a long ways ahead of ourselves here. I mean, this is not about improvements. You're going to leave the gravel, you're going to leave the gravel street on there?
That's all right. I was just going to say, we've had a good discussion, and this is just a public hearing. Their, the vote is for next month, and again, that's just for the plan that we have to have. And I remind people, the last time I was on the council, we got a check from the city of Osmond, because they did not do this. So we have to have a plan every year, whether or not it gets paved or not. We just have to have some, something submitted to the state, so.
Next month, we will be-
Officially voting-
Voting on this.
For the plan, not to pave anything.
But we will be removing fifty-seven, sixty-five, and sixty-one.
Yes.
Correct.
I-
Can we also, can we also look at removing thirty-eight as well?
I had one property owner ask me to have it removed.
Lincoln from-
Second to third.
Second to third, yes. Those are all gap paved. Yeah, you can, but they're all gap paving.
I think those need to stay on there if we're considering that one-year plan.
You said it needs to stay on?
No, I don't know if anybody said that.
I'm just thinking if there's the one-year plan.
Opinion wise?
Yeah.
I'm just asking, because it's rental properties for us, and if it goes through, it's no value to us, but we have to assess it down to our renters, and they're elderly people.
Right.
So.
There's no, there's no access to any blocks on that street?
And nobody has access to their properties. It doesn't impend a driveway, nothing. No one on that block would benefit from it per se, assessing their property, unless you count the alleys, which-
Four alleys. Yeah. Forty-five can run the same, we can't speak to them, so I guess that's around that. It's a good road, there's nothing wrong with it. It doesn't, during the winter, it's, it's actually held up very well through the years.
The thing you started about, just like we were talking about the bus road.
No, it's a, no. On the north side of the assisted living, but between second and third.
Right.
That's not the bus road.
I'm saying that it's just like this-
Oh, I'm-
The property lines run-
Yes, yes.
A hundred and fifty foot instead of fifty foot.
Right.
If you're paying for a hundred and fifty foot for a three hundred block, three hundred yard block, or three hundred foot block, right?
Yes, yeah. I get what you mean.
Instead of fifty foot per lot going the other way.
Right.
If you're paying for a hundred and fifty foot instead of fifty foot.
Right. Well, I think we've had very good discussion, and I just-
I'll make a motion to come out of public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Tyler?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Pam? Pam? Thank you, Mr. Steele. Number fourteen, discussion action, water and sewer rate increases.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to just refer you back to the particular sheets. Number fourteen, items, as well as you get back. First, we'll take a look at water. One of the suggestions made in the water rate study is that we look at a three-year ordinance-
Yeah.
And basically do it incrementally, not having to put you through a year to year to year to year or whatever, rate study argument, you know, back and forth. This will eliminate that and incrementally go up. If you look at the numbers on the base rate, we sit at eleven dollars and twenty-four cents. As you saw with the study a couple months ago, the average across the state here is twenty dollars. I'm not even there, I'm not even close. And I think we can make it with these numbers and still be respectful to the citizens and keep it under that amount. If you look at one year, I'm suggestion, suggesting we go from eleven twenty-four, and it does go up substantially, but we need to look at water and sewer are the money items for the city to take a look at to continue to run our city. We get so much from the electric on the lease, but these have to take a look at how they're going to stabilize, not only for the, the running of the town, but also for infrastructure. And if we don't start looking at infrastructure needs, you're going to have any money for capital improvement program, projects, and, and that's, that could be very concerning. So basically, the one-year, I went up to fourteen and a quarter, two-year fifteen, and three-year fifteen seventy-five. That's a three-year incremental rise with the average knowing it's twenty dollars. If you want to know what Creighton is, get a Creighton bill. Now, they have a different, they've had to for reasons, but this is fairly, fairly low in my opinion, but it will stabilize the water and sewer for the budget and allow us to continue forward. You do this based upon gallons of water, that's through the first ten thousand. Now, you'll look after the next ten thousand, and you will see where, you, first go the first ten thousand, and they go every thousand is a dollar thirty-four right now. I'm asking to go for the first ten thousand, a dollar seventy, two dollars, and then two twenty-five. Once again, and you'll, I'll see, I'll show you this in the next page, or down at the bottom, I guess, to show you how that would look on a typical bill. If you go over ten thousand, and we do have some people that go over ten thousand gallons, sometimes as Courtney and I find out, it's somebody who has a leak. And I, and we, we try to do, Melissa's back here, we try to alert the homeowner, you've got a problem. Take care of it, bring in a service person, take a look to see if it's on us, where it's at the meter, if it's on us, we try to work it out with them, and have done a pretty good job. Anything over ten thousand, we charge a dollar fifty-seven. This is where I go the one year at two dollars, second year two fifty, and the third year three. They're a little bit, little bit higher, but that takes those people who water constantly, like say during the summer, and have large amounts of water being used. Obviously, they, they're willing to pay a little bit more for the extra amount. I don't know about your water. My water, and I water quite a bit, is usually around six thousand or seven thousand gallons a month. Now, and, and anybody here can look at their bills and attest, does that sound about right? Is everybody kind of in that one to ten thousand? Maybe there's a few people who have large families and wash every day. I'm not looking at you, Megan, because I know it's not you, but others that basically water, water, water. Okay? So there has to be some conservation effort. I'm not trying to do it by rates. I'm only doing this by the existing use that we have right now. So if you look at a total bill, and what I looked at for water down below, an example, and this was a one that I had Melissa pull for me, currently they used seven thousand water. Their rate in two thousand nineteen, the amount that had been charged at the total was twenty dollars and sixty-two cents. In two thousand twenty, that would go up to the first hit, okay, so the larger hit, twenty-six fifteen, the next year twenty-nine, and finally thirty-one fifty. So it would gradually hit to the mark where we need to be, but you're not doing it all at once. And after three years of trying to stabilize the water, this entire bill would only be eleven dollars and fifty cents more. And after three years of trying to stabilize the water, uh, this entire bill would only be eleven dollars and fifty cents more. And based upon what we've got, we're paying an average right around fifty, sixty, seventy dollars. There's a few people that pay eighty, ninety, but we see the majority of the residences come in paying about that amount. So, that would be where we're looking at, I mean, as far as, we're not looking at like five, six, seven, eight hundred. That's something we deal more with the electrical, and that's not that. So, that's the water rate. Sewer is based on the water, and this one's a little bit different. I didn't need to necessarily produce as much money for the budget. Sewer is somewhat stabilized. It's handling its own. Current rate, current rate, base rate is fifteen seventy-three. Uh, the one-year for residential, I wanna go up to eighteen, nineteen in the second year, and then twenty in the third year, just dollar, dollar, dollar. Commercial, I think commercial, this is the one time I've actually stuck up for commercial. Sometimes I think they're being stuck too, but that's not the case. And our rate, base rate is twenty-two forty-six, which is extremely low on the commercial rate, but I also looked at going up the first year to twenty-six, the second year twenty-six, and the third year twenty-six. I think that they should be okay to, you know, they do enough for the community in that commercial. We always try to hit them with higher stuff. We never try to incentivize helping them out a little bit too. And I think this is a case where they don't abuse it, and this would be a reasonable rate. If you look upon the, based upon the water sold, because this is where sewer is actually calculated, so when you look at your water rate, if it's twenty dollars, you'll see your sewer rate's like twenty-three. So, it's based on water as well. That's a dollar sixty-nine currently. I didn't wanna hurt anyone on this one, so I went up to a dollar ninety-five on the first year. I mean, you know, we're talking thirty cents or less. Two-year, up to two dollars, a dollar ninety-five to two dollars, that's a nickel. And the three-year, I did go up substantially to two fifty. And if you look down at the numbers that we need, that's, it would bring in about two hundred and thirty-two thousand. In order to keep, uh, where we're at and doing what we need to do, we need two hundred and sixteen thousand and fifty-one dollars. So, we're gonna be in that ballpark after three years and pretty well stabilized. You know, we're not doing extremely bad now, but, and I say that, and everybody says, well, then why change it? Because we're breaking even. If not that, Kurt's just smiling because how do you take care of meters? How do you take care of, uh, uh, infrastructure? You just asked, what are we doing down at Nate's, Nathan's old place? Now, Nathan's gonna pay for a lot of that, but who's paying necessarily for the streetwise and the street and putting it back together and everything else? We'll absorb, the city will absorb a lot of that cost.
You will?
Wow.
Not all of it, though, Nathan, sorry.
I was gonna say, I was pretty sure I got sent a bill for all of it.
Yeah, most of it. You didn't get anything yet, so...
Bush latte.
Bush latte, a thirty-pack?
Does all your water meters work here just now?
Um, you know, there's always that question on water meters, uh, whether they all work. How about this, without transparency at its best, the water meters are dying, and they're dying fast. But we've worked out a program, remember, we talked about two, three, four months ago, of having to replace all water meters, which could substantially run us in the hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar range if we replaced every water meter in town, which would be a direct hit on this. Kurt, in his wisdom, and Courtney and myself get together and try to look at what? Melissa brings us in the numbers, and we were able to work with a couple of companies that will still recognize for at least the next ten to fifteen years with what they call ERTs. And we're able to take old technology that we have now, basically upgrade it with new ERTs and make it work, which is substantially less than what we would've been looking at. I'd have been looking at numbers from, uh, I'll tell you, eleven dollars at base rate, and I'm going up to fifteen, sixteen, I'd have been looking at twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, depending on the needs. And we still wouldn't have been far out of line with the average across the state. So, I think that's one thing just to keep in mind. These are my recommendations.
Do you know how many water meters don't work?
Kurt, uh, what was the last time we did a reading?
I don't know.
It varies every month.
Every month. What we do on those is as we usually do a guesstimate and go there, and Melissa will tell you, ninety-nine percent of the time when we guesstimate, believe it or not, it's less. Everybody says, no, you guesstimate more. No, that doesn't really do us any good. You know, we can guesstimate really high, but we usually guess a little bit low.
Usually, what we do is if our meter, we notice, has totally completely gone out, we go back, Courtney and I will go back to like the last two years of that exact same month and see, okay, is there a pattern? Is there more water usage, is there less water usage? And then we go off to that. We don't guesstimate. We actually go back to that years prior.
They do an analysis.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yes. I mean, we, yes, we're estimating it, but we're looking at your, how, like, your pattern of what that month...
Because we have a lot of data.
Previously was done, because ten to one, it's literally, like, you can say, oh, like, mine is eight thousand. If I look back last year, ten to one is probably anywhere from seven to eight thousand. I mean, you, you was about the same amount, every year.
Some always just say, like, six thousand.
Yeah.
They never change.
Nope, there's something going. Like, some people just automatically just, like, use that amount, and it takes a while for it to go from six thousand all the way around to that seven thousand, that extra thousand gallons, so...
Mine's seven thousand, like clockwork. I don't know why, but every month it's seven thousand, unless I have a leak. And then Melissa says, by the way, you just went up to nineteen thousand this month, something's wrong. So, we do that a lot.
Just a quick question, Mike. You mentioned something that the, uh, the state average is about twenty dollars. I mean, for a better comparison, do you know what the average would be for towns of our size?
This is all towns of our size.
It's twenty dollars?
Yep.
Okay.
Creighton's higher because they have the reverse osmosis system.
Yeah, no, I understand Creighton.
The water rate study, when they brought it to our attention, what was that, three months, four months ago?
Yeah.
Oh, there was like twenty-five, and I've got this stuff down there, you can grab. It was about like twenty-five to thirty towns, and all the towns were from one thousand to two thousand. So, it was all towns of our size.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't know if you were...
Nope, no, we're questioning.
Say why? A follow-up question too, just, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just, uh, real fast, the, the budget that you, that you outlined here is two hundred and sixty-one thousand approximately. Are personnel, like salaries and benefits, also built into that budget?
Water, sewer, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so, I know we're talking about raising wages and stuff like that, doesn't that also inflate the sewer and water budget?
If you look at your, uh, well, we're gonna look at, we've already had some inflation put in there. If you look at your one year, we're gonna be pulling an approximate two hundred and sixteen thousand. You know, really, I need, if I was gonna be real comfortable, two hundred and fifty to two hundred and sixty thousand now. But I don't believe that is the will of the council or the people to start hitting it and hit it hard like in one year. And probably, this is the way you should do it incrementally, so can we make it go with less than two hundred and fifty thousand? Sure, we're, we have, our water and sewer are still our, right now, our bread and butter, and they still survive. We just need to look at the future, past three years, and what is it gonna take when all of a sudden we have a, a large water main break per se, where's that money gonna come from?
I guess my concern is that if, if the water and sewer is getting kind of inflated by personnel changes or the personnel salaries and benefits, like, if you were to vote, you know, like, give a twenty thousand dollar raise or whatever, like, I mean, are you gonna jack up water rates and it's just kind of disguised as like where that money's getting spent?
Actually went down. The budget went down, believe it or not. I mean, there were incremental things that we'll talk about raising, but you'll look at overall...
For personnel, what are you talking about?
So, other than that, because we lost an employee, which we're gonna talk about, Bill Dane, but there's a hundred thousand dollars, uh, just by itself, if you look at package salary plus benefits plus overtime plus whatever goes into, uh, you know, the, the calculations. So, actually, we're looking at a lower personnel number, as Kurt reminds me every day, and we're also looking at lower numbers.
So, you won't be replacing now?
As of right now, no. And this was a, uh, a case where we talked about it. We're gonna need to have some part-time snowplow drivers, and so anybody's interested that has a CDL, you know, come, go talk to Kurt. Skip, you haven't been in an accident the last ten years, right? Okay, there you go, Skip.
But you had a question too.
Yes. Skip got a question too?
Yes, yes.
I was wondering, you were talking about the rates and stuff, you, you, and I heard you say you said your base amount of what, Creighton pays?
No.
No.
Creighton is, uh, that, their average, and I, and I gotta remember, it's in there too. It might be like twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one for a base rate.
No, because they, they, don't they have bad accidents, because they had a bump in it there from like vertigree, don't they?
The base rate's in the thirty because of that reverse osmosis.
I think it's in the thirties, you know, they're the ones that brought up the average a little bit, but the average across all of them was like twenty point something, twenty-one. Like I said, I do have all those, the towns and, and Eric, if you want, for...
Creighton is high, for what it's worth, Creighton is high because they treat theirs.
Right.
Vertigree is high because they ran thirty miles of pipe to get it from over by Highway fourteen.
Right.
They don't draw from...
Don't they run down from vertigree that pipe line from the west?
Unless I'm mistaken, Creighton does not participate in that pipeline. Creighton supplies Brazil Mills, that's as far as they go, I believe.
Yeah, I think vertigree, isn't that with just like...
Vertigree and Niobrara got on the new pipeline from way west, and that was real expensive.
Yep. We had, two months ago, Rural Waters here, they do a study. They do the study for us for free. I have in the office, it just shows what all our expenses are, what our revenues are, and then he bases the rates off of that. So, it's personnel, equipment, everything that goes into water, sewer. So, if we're gonna replace meters and all that, that has to be figured in. It's not just paying employees, it's everything for your infrastructure.
They clear that up very well.
Yep, and if you wanna come look at it, it's in my office, if you wanna come look at it.
We have water rate study, we have the sewer rate, and they're, and they're good. I mean, they were, they were a very good look at, and the one thing, the auditor, this is a totally separate person, said, if you don't do something with your water and sewer, you are going to be backwards. And he was completely correct. Hundred and seventy thousand, when you probably need two hundred thousand. So, we were taking dollars, which is good, we had to do it anyway. We were taking dollars from water and sewer to offset that imbalance that I was telling you about with the budget, but we can't do it anymore. You know, we're to that point where that balance is cleared up, we're where we need to be, everything's going forward, everything looks fine.
I understand, I understand the need for the rate increases. I think it would be a great idea to publicize this and bring it back to the next meeting to have people's input on it. You know, they, the totes were a big adjustment to them, just for that little amount. I think we do need to, to, you know, put this on hold, publish it, and have people come in and...
It'll be an ordinance.
Yeah.
Has to be an ordinance anyway, this is, you know, so, yeah, I know, I agree.
This is just more informative of, as far as...
The sooner the better. I, I know, it's not one you probably could wait for, uh, three or four months, because you're into the budget here now.
But it's not that's being decided tonight.
No, yeah, this is just the water, uh, the rate comparison, so that you see my suggestion as administrator for what I think would be a swallowable, palatable, uh, for all, because I'm still a customer too, and you are too.
Yeah.
You good with that?
Okay.
Ready to move on?
No action then, just discuss.
Well, no, it's, yeah, it was discussion, but we have to have the ordinance built in, so...
So, no action?
Right. So, you'll work on ordinance for next month with Mr. Curtis?
Yeah, I'll, the numbers that he's got now, that he can just plug into the existing ordinance.
Well, we'll bring it in the draft, you can adjust it as you please.
But remember, the one thing I will say, just to, just to make sure it's clear, I think it would be in your best interest not to look, as we've done historically, as a one-year rate increase and stop. I think you should build it in and ask for a three-year incremental ordinance.
Yeah, I, I don't think the rate study guy took it into account, but the other thing we've got is a bunch of hundred-year-old rotten sewer and water pipes that almost need a sinking fund or something like that, because that's gonna get nothing but worse.
I think he mentioned it, I remember him saying something about it, but, but my biggest concern was that he started building in the salary changes, which changed in the last couple of years due to the accounting guy. So...
And I, and I've taken...
So, that, that number got inflated in the last couple of years, because you start putting the salaries under the water and sewer. So, it's, I, I guess, as a citizen, I would be concerned about where those rate increases are going.
Yeah, no, and the reason we have water and sewer, and I think the concern is, is, and this is why all the salaries, when we talk about them, actually have been spread out, so that the budget can accommodate it better. Nobody is fully into water or sewer or whatever. One of the reasons for that is because of the electric. If you look at the electric loss and using just the, the lease payment we get, it's good, but you still have an employee that has to be grouped into somewhere. And the last person or last place you wanna put anybody is in general. You want them to be into the transfer, the water, the sewer, anything that is making money so that you can take a look at the whole picture a little bit better. Putting it in general, you're just putting that whole weight upon taxpayers.
So, what you're talking about, with Dane leaving, that was thirty-two thousand, and so with the increase that was proposed in the post-budget, then the increase was sixteen thousand three twenty-nine. So, that left fifteen thousand six seventy-one for you to use for PR personnel and not to inflate.
Well, yeah, there's definitely money there to use to look at where I believe with what's next on the item agenda, and I'm sure there's gonna be some concern, but I'm gonna tell you where I believe the employees should be, you know, and then, and where they weren't being, uh, in the past, and why I think they should be there now. Plus, there's a few other changes that may come down the road too.
And you got more on that?
Yep, you got more?
Oh, okay.
Just on that with the water stuff, like, like up there to Black Hills, was that just a, just a line just run to them for that two blocks, or, or we did run an infrastructure up that few blocks up to them and then branch off?
It's a service, service line. Kurt, you wanna explain a little bit better?
Service line, yeah.
So, we ran a service line a few blocks instead of it? So, there is economic development there, we just got a service line to them?
I made that, uh, loop up, run water and sewer up to his place, block and a half for one house, so... I mean, that's, we're probably never gonna get paid for it, you know, from just the one house. You know, what we paid for the...
But economic development, because you can't tie on that.
Yeah, but that's just, that's just, uh, you know...
You can tie on to the mains, Skip, you can't really tie on to Black Hills service.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's just...
I mean, just a service line ran up there, but, you know, the, till the rest was just, someday down the road, if I go that way, oh.
Absolutely.
All right. Number fifteen, discussion action, city employee wages twenty nineteen to twenty twenty.
I have, uh, my recommendations, and I'll recommend to, um, the council to do as they see fit. Uh, I'm going to explain why I went the way I did and make it as clear as I can. I had a, once again, a PowerPoint that was for Gary and myself, but, uh, that's not gonna happen. I wanna start with Melissa Forbes. We were paying her in the twenties, and now that we have just two people in the office, she is the deputy clerk that is actually having to pull a lot of duties, has been there for eight years? Nine? Oh, that means I've been here for eleven, yes. So, um, and I, and I think that Melissa's one, she's actually been, um, somewhat not recognized by the councils in the past for what she does, and that's one of those training things. I'd like to have you go in and see what she does on a daily basis. More importantly, see some of the people that she has to deal with on a daily basis, and she always does it fairly well. Uh, I'm recommending her, she was at twenty-nine, two sixty, and I'm, I'd like to see her go to thirty-two thousand. And I don't think that's out of line at all. Deputy clerks and clerks in the state of Nebraska, in towns of our size, and everybody says they look at other places, is anywhere from thirty to fifty-five, depending on job duties. And actually, she's doing more utility clerk duties and other things as well. So, that's my recommendation. I'd like you to go one at a time, Mr. Mayor, if you would, and whatever you decide, that would be up to the council to make the motion in the second.
Just that the council makes the recommendation?
No, no recommendation is there, you simply make a motion of what you want. You're, you're not the recommenda, recommending body, but if you make a motion for less, that's fine. And then Bob can second it, and that's just what it is.
At this point, it's really just a mute thing, because you already talked about this when you were doing the budget, so it's really just a reiteration of what you talked about?
Oh, yeah, but, I mean, I will tell, the budget was based upon a certain percentage to make sure everything was clean, clear and crisp, and the recommendation here for me is based upon what I think they're worth.
Is it just single insurance?
Oh, I think it is. Oh, I think it's, depending on who it is and what they are, she gets financed. She has to pay, insurance is paid, nobody gets it one hundred percent.
Okay.
I make a motion for a two percent raise, or a three percent raise.
Okay, second. Motion's been made and seconded for a two percent raise from, sorry, three percent raise for Melissa Forbes. Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Kurt Hart is the next one on here, he makes forty-two, that's a, actually travesty, that's a, that's a horrible, horrible wage, and I've had to pull him up from thirty when I first came on, and why anybody in his position would take it for thirty is beyond me, but I'd like to see him where Robin was at, and that's at forty-five.
I would, again, make a recommendation for three percent.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded for a three percent raise for Kurt Hart. Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Courtney Retsloff is the same thing, I just think this is, and I said, this is all on your, your shoulders now. I got her making forty-two eight, and I think she should go up to at least forty-four five. I split the difference and put her right in between where I think Troy, Kurt, and where they should be. They're supposed to be making fifty. But you're treating them like, I mean, anyway, but that's where I'm going, why I go with forty-four five.
I'll make a motion for a three percent raise for Courtney.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded for a three percent raise for Courtney Retsloff. Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Troy Johnston is another one that I think has been sorely overlooked. There's not a thing that he can do, and Troy has been one of the people that's been with us the longest, and the idea of going percent, by the way, when you're doing the percent, realize if you're doing a percentage raise, you're doing it based upon merit. There is no cola in this, so I don't even wanna hear about cola. These are merit raises that we're proposing, and I've asked for a little bit more, and for each one of them, and Troy Johnston, I want him to go up to forty-four thousand per year.
What's he making right now?
Forty-one.
So that'd be a seven point three two percent increase.
They were both at seven percent increases in that, and probably not enough, and I've talked to both of them.
Would you increase the tw- twenty percent increase in their insurance?
What's that? Yeah, everything's built into the budget too, which, that is gonna change as well. And we're, we're not going with the same insurance, I mean, I'll have five or six plans for the council to look at, because the insurance we have is just awful.
I'll make a motion for three percent.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded for three percent raise for Troy Johnston. Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Propose that Russ Cleveland be bumped up to thirty-three thousand from thirty-two thousand with Bill Dane gone. If it helps you in your calculation, which I know you're doing quite well, it's only a three percent raise.
I'll make that recommendation for three percent, please. Second.
Second. Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Donna Christensen, by recommendation of the library board, would be bumped from thirty-three to thirty-four, which would be, if you're calculating, three point zero three. I can't get you any closer.
Again, I will recommend a three percent increase. Second.
Second, Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is that real? Okay, I'm sorry. I don't mind.
Donna, get insurance?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you gonna do the individual ones, or, or it's like Bob and?
No, but we can talk about part-time. I usually have that, that's an administrative, rather than anything else. I am looking at giving Chetty and Bob incremental raise, if, and Bob's now off for the winter.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So, he would be coming back to a new, which I would bring to the council.
Sure. Now, I'm scared to talk about the library and the, not Donna, right?
Um, the children's library?
Right.
The library board would like to recommend a fifty cent raise to her ten dollar per hour.
Yeah.
This is not on, yeah, it's for.
She's, she's already, yeah, ten fifty.
Right.
Based upon the raise recommended by the library board.
I'll make a motion for the recommendation of the raise.
I'll second that.
For all of them, or who?
For.
For the children's library.
Yeah.
It's already, okay, that, no, that's okay, that's okay, if, if, no, this one. Megan, you can report back, that it's been done.
Okay, take a minute.
I did not put the police department on the list. To be honest in that, I don't know where to go with this. Normally, this is an administrative, this is not somebody else's job, it's mine, but I have not seen an evaluation for any of them. I know they were probably done, I think it belongs, the mayor did it in the past, and shared it with the individual officers. I think Brian may have had a look at it, but I know the council would probably like to see that as well. I don't know if you have. We have nothing in personnel file, which is actually a violation. We should have something.
And who's the one that was responsible to put that in the personnel file?
I think it would probably be between the chief and Brian, your mayor, right now.
They have personnel files in the police department, that they would be in then?
No, they would all be in the city, they've always been, which was where we got most of our city personnel files and employee handbook for the last twenty-some years.
And on police matters, I would've brought it up during police report, I've still got some things to talk about, but we didn't get the police report.
Correct.
So, you know, with discipline issues pending, for other reasons as well, I would suggest you defer raises until you resolve what's going on here.
Yeah, I, it's not on, I don't have anything, so I just don't know where to go. I mean, this is at the direction of your mayor, to go forward as he sees fit.
I was just gonna say that this is the first year out of the seven years on the council that I saw everybody's. Evaluation, thank you. Except for yours, when you asked the other council members to do yours, I only got one back. But I did get to see everybody's, but Bruce, I was under the impression after he showed me the three of theirs, his and Jerry and Tyler, that he was taking it over to Courtney, so I didn't, I don't know why that didn't happen.
Nope, I, I don't make any, and as far as mine, I, it would go tonight, probably the same way. I don't ask for any number in particular. I know where it's at, where, you know, I believe each individual should be at, so I would just go upon your best judgment tonight, and then next month, bring it back as a, an ordinance, 'cause in the state of Nebraska, or at least in our code, it is still that way, not, not nineteen oh two, it's a little bit.
Disinformed.
It's a very old, old ordinance, so, recommendations from the board.
Your salary is set by ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Which I'll bring back next month with a, probably a contract.
Well, I would like to recommend a three percent raise for Mike also.
I'd second that.
Call in favor, Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Did we decide on the police?
We're deferring on the police.
No, we're deferring on the police.
Good enough.
Then we save the council, mayor for last.
I think that we should talk about that, once again, and I will go as being consistent, I think that your council and your mayor, I'm using Judy, Judy, never mind, I don't wanna talk about anything bad, but our council and mayor, we went through this once before about raises for you, and I think Brian had a recommendation to present, and I have it already protected in the budget, you know, so it would be there, but it's long overdue, you haven't had any raises, and I, the reason I was picking on Judy is because we were, the last time we had this discussion, there was somewhat of a discussion of what are the pros and cons, so.
I was gonna say, again, probably twenty, thirty, forty years, whatever, the mayor got two thousand a year, and the council got one thousand a year. Approximately ten years ago, that increased to three thousand a year for the mayor and two thousand a year for the council. I believe, just in the titles, just for the extra meetings and everything, my proposal, it's three thousand dollars total for the five people, that the mayor go from three to thirty-five hundred, the council president, which has never been separate, go from two thousand to three thousand, and the remaining three council members go from two thousand to twenty-five hundred, so it'd be five hundred year, five hundred dollars a year more for the mayor, and the three councilmen, one thousand dollars a year more for the council president. And that was my recommendation to Mr. Holtman.
Well, that has to be set by ordinance. I can bring you back an ordinance, and I would bring with it some comments as to the effective dates, 'cause you have issues of voting on your own salary during your own terms.
Sure.
So I'll, I'll explain that when we get there. But it does have to change by changing an ordinance. So you want an ordinance to that effect for consideration next month?
Consider this one, yes. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I'd like to report that every year that, when I became a city council member, I did not realize I made a salary. When they raised it, I declined, I said that I did not think, I voted against the raise, and every year it was brought up, I voted against the raise. I think the thousand dollars was more than enough to pay me for my time and my car, going back and forth to meetings. I just thought, this is a civic duty, I would've done it for nothing, I think raising the wages on it is ridiculous.
When I asked to be considered to take this role, I thought it was volunteer. I did not realize.
I didn't.
I just thought I was doing that for the city. That was a surprise to me.
Anyone else?
I agree with Judy's comments, I think some of it has to do with volunteerism and civic duty to your city, you didn't always have to be paid to do a good job.
Number seventeen, city attorney comments.
Do we wanna go back to Mike's?
Oh, did you have more to finish, I'm sorry.
I don't know if we have any more, maybe I do. Am I missing somebody, Julie?
Well, you just stopped after your ICMA, so I didn't know if you wanted to go through the rest.
Oh, yeah, if there's any addition, I want to get it done before the public hearing, so you didn't have to listen to me ramble on and on, so, something that I'm good at. So, I don't have anything, it's been a busy month, and if it's all right, just for administrator comment, I, I personally want to thank the council for anything that you've done. I'm a little bit, I, just because I'm that type of person, my heart goes out, I, I'm gonna speak with, I think especially the two maintenance guys I have, Kurt and Troy, I think are very, maybe a little bit hurt by the fact that you can take into account the missing people, but I don't want that to reflect on the gratitude that we have to get a wage and to sit there and work at what we like to do, what we love to do, and accept the three percent. So, for myself and maybe some others, I thank you for the three percent.
Well, reverting back to police report briefly.
And that was my error too, I guess, I forgot to mention at the time, the annual conference in Carney they go to every year for their continuing education is why the police department is not here.
Okay, well, that was my first question, I guess, I, whether or not you're gonna enforce officer in attendance thing, are they all attending the annual conference?
And that's an every year thing, yeah.
So that is still the understanding, that there's, generally speaking, gonna be somebody here to talk to, huh?
Except for this month, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I apologize for that, yeah.
And separately, any new dog citations? I, this business of dogs and prosecutions and stuff is eating my lunch. I'm trying not to make this a full-time job as being the city attorney, but from what I understood, there was a child bit near the school last month, no citation turned in, no nothing?
I don't see nothing on my desk. By, whose dog was it?
I don't have a report, I don't have a name, somebody west of the school, and a dog chased kids toward the school and bit one, that's the best I got. But I, I thought it was pretty clear that something happened and a child got bit, it seemed like there should've been.
Well, there's one, there's one listed on the police report for September.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that, you know, having it on the report does nothing to make it better.
Right. The only thing, when I asked Bruce, I called him to see if there was anything that, if you had any questions, and that's the only one, if it, that's the same one, he said there was a lady taking a dog to the kennel, and it wasn't on a leash, and a child was walking up or to school, and she told the child, stop, and then the child like approached a dog, and supposedly there was marks, but it didn't break the skin, so he had to write it down as a bite, just for his.
But the ordinance is that all dogs have.
But it's still mad.
I understand.
And the version I got was the child was running away, and the lady shouted at the child, said, don't run, and it'll be okay, and the child stopped and got bit.
Was it somebody who we had issues before?
He didn't give a name, he didn't give.
I would like to know.
But it should be a report, and it should be some kind of a citation. Separately, the EMC people are working on the work comp, here, I've told you that as a matter of a report before. The, the issue of them considering and advising me about the discipline issues got messed up in their office, and that's why we are still twirling in the wind here a bit. They assigned it to two different individuals and sent it to two law firms for discussion, and it got rather confused, and I called them last Friday and said, what is going on? Why am I not hearing from anyone? And they said, oh, we're just getting this straightened out. And then they called me Monday, yesterday, and we're coming together on it.
Okay.
I have now filed dog complaints with the county on the Stewart dog. In the course of the disclosure of documents for the lawsuit, where the people with the little dog, they got chewed up, sued the Stewart's, we got the police reports to Courtney and to me, and the police reports indicated two citations. So, our code says the citations get turned into the city immediately, they've got five days to pay a little fine, and then if it doesn't happen, it comes to me to prosecute. None of that happened, the citation stayed in the police files, we didn't know about them, Courtney didn't know about them, until I saw them in the reports, and I said, well, if there's citations, we gotta disclose them, get copies. So we got copies, well, now I've got those. And in the course of doing that, I have also added some dangerous dog prosecution filings, and I've sent copies of this stuff to the Stewart's, and this will be coming to court. I mean, how I'm gonna prosecute the dangerous dog filings remains to be seen, because there were no citations issued, but I'll try to find a way. On that question, we've had people arguing the issues of dogs and dangerous dogs, and I made a bit of a hobby, every time I saw a dog attack news item nationally, I made copies in the last two months. Here are one, two, three, four, five, six copies for the council. I'm gonna keep one set, I've got three, two or three more here, if anybody from the public would like them, and you can certainly, well, if we have six, make it seven, then Courtney will have one at the office, if anybody else thinks they want them. The most recent that was significant, I thought, and that's what induced me to run the copies, pair of dogs impounded in Norfolk, bit two people, German shepherd and a pit bull, eleven-year-old girl was injured, a nineteen-year-old was injured. This happened on October fourth, and already, the citations have been issued, and the dogs have been impounded. That's how Norfolk does it. But that's just a matter of news. I guess the other thing I had prepared was a bit of notes to just have a discussion with the police department about the duties of the department, and the need to keep the various duties segregated, that the council makes the laws, the police observe the crimes The police observe the crimes and issue citations. And then prosecution and penalties are beyond the police. You know, what I keep hearing is excuses for the guilty party. Well, it was just, I mean, the most recent is, well, it was just the lady trying to get the dog in a kennel. The police are not the public defenders. They're not supposed to protect the criminal. They're supposed to issue the citations and someone else decides the rest of that stuff. And we have to somehow get a handle on that, but we'll be talking about it. I've also seen reports, and I understand there's reports into the city office, that the big dog is still showing up outside the Stewart's door. I have photographs that have been given to me by citizens. And there's a big bull mastiff-type creature still at the Stewart's house, which we have been assured is gone forever. So on the same count, I don't know quite how to manage that, short of going investigating it myself. Sure.
Actually, they have two dogs and one is a male of that same, you know, that bit that kicked that dog. So they have two of them and it's about the same size.
They have a puppy.
Yes.
And then there's, but there's still a big dog. What's, what are you saying the other big dog is? A what?
It's a massive.
Same size dog, but not the dog that bit the, that bit the little dog?
But almost about the same size.
Okay.
But it's a male.
Courtney, is that second dog licensed that you know, the one they're talking about? If this is not the same dog?
I don't think any of their dogs are licensed. I don't have to check.
And why not? I mean, they've had how many offenses? Why is it just being taken care of by a police department?
For one thing, there have never been any citations.
Exactly. This is so frustrating.
Now, we have pending as of today in the Pierce County Court, prosecution for no license, no dangerous dog permit, no kennel, and three or four other things. Even if just based on the big dog that's still there, whether the other dog is gone or not. I didn't, I didn't add, I didn't add to that. And we're going to come and get the dog that bit the little dog because I didn't know if I could prove it. And it's going to be difficult enough to prove all the rest of this without proper documentation, but we'll be talking about that.
Bruce, I just have a question for you. I just need a little bit of help of trying to figure things out in my own mind. We do claims and workman's comp regularly. All I want to know from you, because I've heard from some of the several of the citizens out there that have come back and said, why are you being so harsh when this is just a claim to workman's comp? Am I missing something, Bruce? I don't treat this like a comp claim.
Well, I think the general public is perhaps confused that there has been a workman's compensation administrative claim turned in. I take it that is not so. I mean, you guys, from what I understand, have not been ever contacted in a general sense of, I got hurt, turn this into the insurance carrier. You've never done that, right? What we're talking about here is opening the discussion with the litigation filed in the workers' comp court. That's way different. But that'll all sort itself out with the hotshots and the insurance companies. We won't deal with that much, other than the facts. You know, you've been questioned at the office, what's in your records, what's out there, what's going on. And they'll deal with it.
Because we've had, I mean, the reason I'm asking is because it's unusual to me. I mean, I've never had a comp claim where I've had attorneys call me and, you know, and go through like a deposition-type thing. This is totally different.
Well, this is a lawsuit. This is not a workman's comp filing in an administrative sense.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
And I think that has confused a lot of people, just in the difference between news articles and work comps claims and what's going on. But it's, it's normally the next step after workman's comp administrative activity has failed. And in fact, that's what they're claiming, but I don't know how they're going to prove that based on what you told me. But we shouldn't be discussing the merits of that here.
Right, right, no, it's just a question.
Just it's a matter of clarification for the public to have some understanding of what's going on. Okay, that's really all I have.
Can I ask about that dog that you brought, that thing? So Brian, you were given an ordinance from Douglas County by Michelle on people that should not ever own a dog. Have we done anything? Have we looked at that? It looks like this is a situation that maybe that could be adapted to. Do you still have it?
Is that something that?
We have that, or I have that. I have a copy of an Omaha ordinance that the lady gave us, which is all very well and good. But we have a pretty good ordinance.
Well, we have.
It's a matter of enforcing it.
Yes, getting enforced.
For people that should not own a dog in the first place?
Well.
That's how I understood that ordinance. The other one that she brought you on, I might be wrong. But there are people that should not ever be allowed to own a dog.
Pretty hard to define, but it should be looked at. Well, if we pass an ordinance that says Kareen gets to decide, we'll refer them to her.
So if we're talking about this dog again, the same people, dogs, and we as a council can talk about it, but we can't physically do anything about it? I would like to ask you, Brian, what you're going to do about it? If you're the one that talks to the police, you should be talking to the police and something's got to be done. We can't let this go and go and go and go. Something seriously bad is going to happen. Got them kids running around that school and now you've got two dogs over there already.
No, there's only one that I know. The one's gone.
There's two, says the neighbor. And I, I've witnessed. So.
No, I was.
We've got to quit talking about this and do something.
It needs to be enforced. It was supposed to be enforced last month.
I was told when I went by there, it was just the baby that was there.
Well, maybe somebody needs to go knock on the door with the police department and verify this. Because it's going to end up being our city's liability if something happens. They're going to sue us. Because our law enforcement did not take care of it. That's a huge issue for me and for our city.
Nathan's got a question.
Okay.
I got a question for you, Bruce, just trying to stay as open-minded and impartial as possible on this whole entire thing. You maybe can answer this, maybe not. Do you get, as the city attorney, a base pay? As in whether you do anything on a legal aspect for the city that you're on there as the city attorney?
What we do, what we do, what we do is all of the general business, so that we don't have to write down individual phone calls and little stuff and regular business and ordinances and what have you. All of the general business is a flat twelve hundred and fifty dollars a month. I'm thinking that should be raised to six thousand.
I was there for that discussion.
But apart from that, the other part of the agreement I have with the city is that if we have litigation, that is separate because it's almost impossible to predict. We now have workers' comp litigation. And if we have prosecutions, that, of course, is litigation. And I've heard the argument, which I find to be incredibly amusing, that, well, the city never makes any money on these prosecutions and that's why we won't want to do them. Are they going to say that when the bank gets robbed? Are they going to say that?
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Well, that's the point, and that's the discussion I've heard.
I've moved in here. I don't know. So I'm assuming in a way then, the city has to somewhat budget for potentially paying you and doesn't come out of anybody's salary. So if you take a sixty-dollar dog ticket and prosecute it to the fullest extent of the law and go do something about it on a legal aspect.
Might cost the city a few hundred bucks.
And if it costs the city a thousand dollars, does it come out of a policeman's pocket?
The other, the other way to look at that is, they're already spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for whatever. And that's not bringing in any money.
They're not writing tickets.
If it was two hundred and fifty thousand and five hundred and we got something done, I would think that it'd be a pretty good bet.
Just before you, Vicki goes, I just want to answer Nathan. Nathan, every budget, and I've been very careful, that's at zero-based, we talked about zero. Every department, every budget has built-in legal. And if the economic development, and Susan's seen this, where if Bruce does something to sign, that'll come out of that department.
And that's a separate issue too, because that's a new division and a whole bunch of paperwork all of a sudden.
So that's how, you know, we do this and yes, no, it's all, and the police department has it built in. It has been less lately, but I've always got a built-in X amount of legal costs within the police budget.
So, but what you were, what we were saying is that, cost-wise, in their budget, there was no revenue listed because there's no tickets. So, right?
I'm trying, I never budget revenue. And that's not, I'm not saying anything there with the department, but I understand there's certain things. I don't budget revenue for parks either. Because that makes no sense unless I get a grant or something or a loan.
But don't get caught up in the discussion that law enforcement is a profit-making deal.
That's why.
That is just garbage from the outset.
They're not, but I think the point is, and it is very disturbing for a child to get bit by a dog. But unless you enforce the ordinances, write tickets for people who don't use leashes or they don't register their dogs. Why would anyone in this town obey any of these orders? What's, what's to happen? Nothing. That is the most disturbing to me.
Exactly.
Me too, Vicki.
There ain't no politicians in Washington in jail either yet.
But it's got to start somewhere, right?
Yeah, it does.
It was like in the Plainview paper this week.
Hey, Bruce.
That a man wrote that we cannot consider, or we cannot expect all of our young children to stop at stop signs. You know, where does, what does that word mean? Didn't it used to mean stop and then proceed if all is well? I mean, these ordinances are, we might as well get rid of all stop signs then. Because they're not being fitted.
So back to the question, do you have a plan on approaching this problem? You don't have to divulge it to us, but do you have a plan?
Yes.
Good. You going to start implementing it soon?
I certainly hope so.
Okay.
I think the public would actually like to know what the plan would be.
I, I think it's appropriate. I think it's always appropriate for, can you hear, as a public and as administrator, you have a right to ask the council for direct answers.
Well, also to hold those accountable.
Yes.
Because if they say they have a plan and there's no detail about it, you can't hold anybody accountable.
For instance, I thought the dog thing was taken care of last month.
That's what we were told. That's what I was told.
And did you hear a difference?
Because I went by there and they said that was the baby dog, that the big dog was gone.
Well, I, I think we're at the point that we can't take individuals to the word and.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. But that big dog was in that trailer that's in their backyard.
There's a trailer behind their house.
Yep. That's where the, I seen that dog come out of.
But it's two different dogs. I mean, if they got rid of the one and they've still got the male.
Yeah, but what, what my thing is, is even if they got the male, how did you know it was going to bite another kid?
Exactly.
I would like to know who that, that.
That big dog chased me.
Who's dog that was that bit that child?
I live on Sixth Street.
We already know. We'll tell you afterwards.
Okay.
So I'm still get asked for his plan?
Yeah, I would like to know it.
So what is it?
Just to go with the police and get it taken care of.
But we've talked and talked and talked, but they don't do it. So.
So Brian, the step-by-step, what you need to take is, these dogs are not licensed.
Right.
Okay, so that's your first step.
And they're on leashes.
They're on leashes. We don't have the correct kenneling, so.
Right.
Is that your plan?
The ordinances that are in there.
We're not attacking you.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to be step-by-step for these guys to know what you're going to do.
Because I do have another question. Council saying, I don't really know you very much. Can you divulge something about you? Do we know who you are? I don't know who he is very much. You guys.
He works at Husker Egg.
I know, I know he works at Husker.
I said, you know who he's married to?
I don't know that. Well, yeah, I started Husker Egg July twenty-ninth. I've come from Manjory Cricket over in Austin for almost five years. Always been in parks. It's kind of been my passion the last twelve years. That's what I'm still doing for Husker Egg. These six years I've been married to Jolene, coming up Saturday, lived in town by close to seven. Member of the Zion Lutheran Church, been on the church council ever since I moved to town, except for July was my term. I just, time to get off.
You have one daughter, Diane.
One daughter? Yep, yep. Never there. She'll be up yet.
So, and your vision for Plainview is what?
Good question. You know, it's more positive. You know, I.
Progressive, would you say?
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm finding out that I'm going to make this my own town now. Not going to get doing without time, so. I like my job out there too, and so I'm not, I'm not going to be moving anywhere. You know, it's, it's getting little things like what we're discussing tonight to where these meetings are moving forward. It's, I've been, if you guys remember, a couple of years ago, I was part of this dog ordinance committee trying to enforce these laws. So this is driving me nuts right now. Seeing these laws are not being followed, that we worked very hard on.
That hours spent.
Two, three years ago and when they should have just been removed. So my thing is, let's get these little things done and as a town, move forward as a group. And not, oh, we got this little issue over here, we got this little issue over here, you know? So that's my vision. You know, it's, just anything we can do to do that, to ease life, to make everybody come together on that margin.
A big, big step that you got there.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
We've got lots of people.
Question. I'm hearing, am I hearing this right? There's no citations that are being issued on anything in this town? Is that, is that what you guys are telling me?
That's the accusation, is yes.
No, that's not.
Why are we keeping any of them?
No, in a general sense, that's not entirely correct.
On certain.
Certain.
They have issued a few citations this year, always on things that the county attorney will prosecute. So that they are not prosecuted by the city attorney. But the city attorney will not, or the county attorney will not prosecute local violations. The county attorney will not prosecute do, dog complaints. The county attorney will not prosecute local stop signs and streets and things like that. So therein lies the problem.
So what is he, what is he prosecuting then?
I could get you that, but I don't have that. But he's, I've talked to the county attorney and he has approximately the same number of citations out of Osmond and Plainview for state-level offenses. Osmond, Pierce and Plainview. I mean, the towns are different. And it's not a mechanical decision, but he has had some prosecutions. But the question is, I get in this, at this level, city violations. That's been the problem, I think.
How many city violations have you had in the last five years?
None.
Ten?
None. The joke at the state patrol and the sheriff's office is Plainview is the most honest town in northeast Nebraska.
I had the county attorney ask me that, that I was on the city council.
You had the county attorney ask you that?
Yeah, is it, is it really that perfect?
You know, this, this dog thing, forty years ago, I lived in Columbus. I had a dog and we had it fenced in yard, but to put the dog in the yard, I would have to go out the back door, open the gate. So the one morning I decided just open the door, let the dog out. And I let the dog out. Two minutes later, there's a policeman ringing my doorbell. And I instantly had a ticket in my hand, dog at large. Don't remember what the fine was, but I mean, it was, it was a done deal. The dog was at large. He wasn't attacking anybody. He just wasn't where he was supposed to be and I had a ticket, boom, just like that.
Anything else, Mr. Curtis?
No, I was done and answering questions at this point.
Being for on ordinance of pets, how come the town doesn't have a cat ordinance?
Yes.
There is one.
Loose?
As you talk to any officer in any town, it's harder to catch a cat than it is a dog.
Can I trap him?
You trap him?
Sure.
If you just shoot him with a shotgun, it's different.
All right. Number eighteen, council comments. Bob?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment about.
I think it is. Sorry.
Make a comment about what Mike said. I would just like to make a comment about what Mike said about, no one should feel slighted or not appreciated getting the three percent raise. Because we as a council, we have to be fiscally responsible. And if you start giving out seven and ten percent raises every year, your water rate's going to be like five hundred dollars a month. But what I'm saying is, we appreciate all the city employees and all the work they do and it does not go unnoticed. So.
So you don't want to raise?
Public servant. I agree.
I would agree. The only thing I have to say is that I would agree a hundred percent with what Bob said as far as the raises and the art increases as well. I don't, I don't see that we need to raise. I, like I said, when I asked to be considered for this role, I thought it was public servant. I didn't realize that we got paid for it until I was informed that. I just thought it's something I need to do for my community and so, no, I don't think we need to raise.
Pam?
Not much, but I guess thank you and yeah, I agree. I mean, we're not here for the money. Look forward to working for, with everybody. Get to know me more. I'm always at home, it seems like. Whatever, so.
Brian, did you want to entertain a couple more questions? I know it's a couple people.
I have a question to Mr. Curtis. And be kind to me, Mr. Curtis. You say you get paid one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per month. How many hours?
How many hours, is that hours? And if you, if you go over a certain amount of hours, what do you charge the city? And is it different for the police department or, you know, different things?
Bruce, let me just say one thing before you start.
And be kind, please.
Shelley, I want, this'll help you answer it. Nobody is more aware, and in the past, and Judy can remember this, of holding people accountable. Bruce has worked for like a $1,250 a month. That is a pittance for a lawyer. If you actually get a attorney in any other community and try to do it, I look at the McNally's, stuff that they do around the towns here, and I would say that when we settled this agreement, $1,250 a month was not enough. You know, and in fact, there's, I have something I'll call in tomorrow that I want to work aside from that $1,250. But if that helps answer from my side, I'm, I'm very aware and I try to keep him at least at the accountability level, and he is too. So, I, I appreciate it, Bruce, and I haven't said that since we did it.
When we put this together, any lawyers at my level of experience and around the country are charging $175 to $250 an hour. I had been billing some years ago, $180 an hour. You know, that sounds like a lot, but keep in mind, that's no benefits, your own office, paying all your staff, all that comes out of that. I always, for now forty years, have worked for the city for two-thirds of normal billing rate. So, at the time I set the $180 an hour, the city became $125. And the $125 became, "I hope I can get all the city's work done in 10 hours, so we'll do $1,250." And that's where that came from. The 10 hours is a pipe dream under current circumstances. But that has stayed there, except for the circumstances of the litigation and some extra for economic development, which is certainly necessary, but way above and beyond normal business. But that's where it all came from, back when we set the $1,250, and I've just left it alone.
So, then after the $1,250?
What?
Then after the $1,250, you charge $500 an hour?
No, periodically though, if I do this litigation business or I do the economic development, I would bill that at a full-rate thing.